We thank you for gathering up here today to do the business of this great city. We thank you for the privilege of living in the city of Atwater. We pray especially tonight, Father, for our mayor as he guides the city, for our city councilmen as they work together to build the city for a better environment for our citizens, for those that our department has as they guide their departments in trying to build the city in the hard economic times that all cities are at, Father. We do thank you for the cooperation and the building together of this city that must go on in order for us to do what needs to happen, Father. We thank you for the policemen that protect us, the firemen that protect us, and all the citizens within the city. Jesus name. Amen.
Well, as you can see, we're having some city clerk issues this evening here, so this evening we'll call on Mr. McBride for the role.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. For a roll call, we have Creighton.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Vera.
Here.
Vineyard.
Present.
And Price.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay. Mayor, City Attorney, report in closed session.
Staff was given direction, nothing to report.
Next on the agenda, we have subsequent need items. The city clerk shall announce if we have anything for tonight for subsequent need. If we do, announce the time to state it.
Are there any items subsequent that any of the members have? Okay. Hearing none.
Approval of agenda as posted or amended. This is the time for the council to remove any items they have or change order of agenda if need be.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening from council? Okay. Hearing none. Entertained motion? I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I want to, item fifteen and sixteen, I'd like to move those to the top.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion, we move them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Raymond.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Creighton.
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Yes.
Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address it for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and replaced on a future agenda. To comment on an item, please limit your time for five minutes, and, thank you.
Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak before the council tonight?
Helen Amran, 5500 Fleming Road. The intersection of Commerce and SP, does it belong to the city or the county? Because we now have traffic coming out from that Applegate Shopping Center, and someone is going to get killed there, because they just run right in front of you, just. Does that belong to county or city?
What was the address again?
Commerce and.
SP and Commerce Avenue.
Right, that's the county.
County Darren.
It's right on the edge, right away on this side, I believe, the city.
But when a traffic study was done for Applegate Shopping Center, was that taken into consideration what would happen there? Because there's only one way in and one way out.
That had to be researched.
We could probably reach out to the county, couldn't we? I think, I think the city, I think we could reach out to the city and work with the county, and, you're right.
Well, it's, it's really serious, guys.
I know, I travel that every day a hundred times, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
It's very, very serious.
So we can do that, Scott?
Noted. Thank you, Helen.
Darren, we're going to come.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Box 1355, Atwater. At our first workshop, our mayor talked to us about getting out of the box and coming up with some ideas that could possibly save us some money. So tonight, I'd like to make a quick comment regarding our city using a recruitment consultant firm to screen city manager applicants, other Merced County cities using consultants paid out between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, according to an article in the Merced Sunstar. I suggest that cities of Livingston, Los Banos, and Merced be asked for help with this applicant screening. I am sure a representative from one or more of these cities could provide a human resource director or assistant director to help with the screening of Atwater applicants for our city manager's position. I would suspect the cost of coffee and donuts or lunch would be substantially less than consultant fees. I know this is going to be quick, that's what usually happens to me, so I'm going to save another comment for next council meeting, which is a little bit longer, but I'll give you a briefing on what it's going to be about. It's going to deal with managers who are intimidating versus managers who have team effort positions, or have this for an idea. I would also make, I'd like to ask a question, I guess, I'm not sure which department head could answer this for me, but during our first, our first meeting we had, the workshop, I presented a policy and procedures manual that was updated from an old one, which was taking us back eight or nine years, and we didn't do well when we had the audit, because we didn't have the combination policy and procedures. We just strictly had policy. I'd like to find out if this thing has been implemented or is going to be implemented. I was sitting with our city attorney for a consular period at times, so I have no idea what's happening with that. The next thing I would like to mention is, our mayor came up with what I thought was some really fantastic information regarding our federal corrections at the base, and the possibility arose in the discussion that the warden would offer workers to come and work in our parks. My suggestion is, if that was to work out, if we were to get people that had, say, forty-five days or sixty days left on their particular sentence, I think you could guarantee that they would be there and within that period of time. I don't think there was going to run away with sixty days left on their sentence. So I'd like to submit that for consideration, which would probably save us a considerable amount of money in our parking wreck department for manpower stuff. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment on it. The parks thing with the prison, is there a way that a couple of us council members could work with the warden and Mr. Callaway to try to do something on those parks?
Well, there's, there's more to, the idea of having the trustee type of inmates over there is, is a non-issue. In lots of the discussions that I've had with the warden, it's, it's making a written request, it is truly that simple, just making a written request, how many, what day, what time, and where do you want them to work, and what do you want them to do. It's that simplistic, but there's, you know, mitigating issues that are along with that, and we can discuss that later on, but, you know, labor folks are a little concerned. Somebody needs to also be responsible for watching over them and that type of thing. So it's, they're there, if we can just work through issues within the city with our labor reps.
Are we currently doing this, Scott?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the council, we did actually use them for the community cleanup day on Love Atwater. They were involved, and we also had a crew of about six or seven that assisted the day after for planting trees on Broadway, so we have used them recently. And I just want to make sure that they're, the intent is kind of there for extra projects or unique project, they're not really there for ongoing maintenance, but to the extent that we can kind of organize something that's a project-specific thing, that's a great tool for us to use.
Great.
Yeah, and we've used them also, or they've, they've been part of Love Atwater and worked in the parks, Rolston Park, for example, places like that. They do a fantastic job, and, you know, they, it's, it's a resource that I hope that we can use more in the future.
Very good.
Yep. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen, City Manager Frank Johnson, Modesto, California, 608 13th Street. Couple citizens have come and brought some information about the city manager operating a bed and breakfast, an illegal hotel. The question was, was it true? We went online and we found it, and it was in operation. We also looked to see if there was any type of a county license, city license, hotel license, tax exempt. We found nothing. So we contacted the county. County looked up the partial and the address, nothing, but yet it was online and being advertised on the web with Mr. McBride's photo and what he was offering, and what he was advertising was what we were investigating. We then contacted the county tax office, and there's never been any taxes paid on this. This home was built fourteen years ago, so therefore it couldn't have been historical. The underlying matter is it's illegal. It was illegal from the beginning. No permits whatsoever. The question is, how do you get away with that? We contacted the DA's office to see if this was criminal. The other issue is, how much money does he owe on taxes? How long has it been operational? Well, we can definitely follow that on the website. How long has the website been up? Which is now taken down with the comment that Mr. McBride is going to move his grandmother in, or his mother-in-law, whatever. We have the proof. Doesn't matter who he's going to move in, the fact that it existed. Is this a cover of the law? I don't know. Who do you trust here? How do you get away with thousands of dollars? There's a whole lot of things going on. I just got a report today of another expenditure from a lawsuit that was settled with the You're in a position to lead by example, and if you fail that, it's called accountability, and you are to be held accountable for your actions. There's a lot of issues here that need to be answered. I still haven't got an answer about the city spending two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on an employee who didn't work a day and then was fired, terminated. I'm not giving up, I'm only getting better, and I'm not going away. This goes back to Frank Pedro, who made the appointment. Wasn't there a background done then? Where was the city attorney? If I can find simple information out like this about an employee or someone that represents this city, why is it so difficult for the city attorney, the outgoing city manager, and even the mayor to find out who's going to represent this city? Accountability. If any of this actually is accusations come true, accountability to everyone involved. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Mr. McBride.
Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate you speaking your mind. I did inform the council that I've had this business. Obviously, my name and picture on it, I'm not trying to hide it. We are working with the county on the appropriate process, if any, to make sure that we're doing what's required. We have ceased any operation, and, again, I'm not trying to hide this, I can tell you that we report the income to the IRS and the state. We've been doing that for years. The home was built for my mother-in-law, who passed away several years ago. It was a vacant home we had at the back of the house, it was very depressing to my family. We've not tried to skirt the issues, and, but I will say this, the county code needs to be updated. The county code talks about the state having intent of making income from property, and it has other issues that are not addressed in the current county code. I've talked to them about perhaps updating it, so I have informed the council about this, they're aware of the issue, I have never hidden it, and I've also informed the council tonight that I'm not seeking to stay on as a city manager going forward, and I'm continuing to work with the county on remediation of any of the issues.
Okay. According to your agenda.
Mr. Johnson.
During public speaking, you are not to comment. You're not to comment.
Mr. Johnson, you've had your, your comments, thank you.
You allow him to violate the rights of public speaking. He just violated those rights in front of everybody right here.
Thank you for your observation.
It's not an observation.
Thank you for your observation.
I would want to file a complaint. He's not to comment to me. That puts fear in somebody else that wants to get up and do public speaking.
Mr. Johnson, please, you have had, you've had your five minutes, thank you for your comments.
I'm allowed to speak because he addressed me. Point of order. He violated the public speaking code. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Next agenda item, please.
Next agenda item is a verbal report by Merced County Supervisor McDaniel.
Mayor Price, council, thank you very much. I can't address that, we are doing a code update, zoning update on that. It's actually, the county is behind since Airbnb has been out there, and we, and there's actually over thirty people being advertising here in the, in the Merced County area, so it is something that the county is addressing right now. I'm here to update our Washington DC trip. Last week, we were there for four days. It was a very long four days, especially when you get caught in LAX for an extra three hours, and you get home and your tire splat whenever you could arrive at the airport here in Fresno, so you get home a little later than what you want. But our first day on Wednesday, Tuesday was a travel day, we were able to meet with the US Department of Justice. My main thing there was, and I'll let the city councilman who attended this meeting speak on behalf of what we did over there, but my main concern in this meeting is trying to find out where the Justice Department is on marijuana, the cannabis issue. We got nowhere with it, they don't, they don't have anything on it. Sessions has been speaking, but they have no policy on it yet, so they've been given no direction. They do have their ideas, but yet they didn't want to disclose those with us. In doing that, I did meet with Townsend Associates, Jim Patterson, our lobbyist through there. We will be composing a letter going out, and I'd hope that the city of Atwater sign on urging the Department of Justice to develop some kind of strategy. So we're going to not only send a, a letter to the Department of Justice, but we're also going to send a letter to our Valley delegation, as well as our state Senator Kamala Harris and Senator Dianne Feinstein, to sign on to the letter with us, so we can urge our administration to please take a stance on this and know where, where we're going with it. We're also able to meet with the US Department of Commerce, Economic Development Agency. It was a much different tune this time when we met with them than it was in January when I met with them. And January is all about roads and commodes, and they want to spend the money. This time, it was more about collaboration, and how can we partner up, public-private partnerships, and how can we bring other entities to the table without giving us money, but ready to put us together with folks who could probably help us out in these matters. US Department of Agriculture, there was a lot of opportunities there to speak on behalf. Atwater is just a little bit out of the population base, they'll receive any kind of federal funding from rural development. We were drawing the line at twenty thousand, but then we saw where even up to forty thousand there were some opportunities there, but I, we still don't fall under, under that preview. There are some opportunities, though, within the outside area, if we have to handle the sewage system, that we can fall over into the rurals, being able to work with the city, and then that way, US Department of Agriculture can work with the city in helping out some of our rural areas. Also got to meet with Senator Kamala Harris' staff. We actually met with her head staff person on water, which was good. We presented our water issue and our stance, and it's a little humbling whenever he looks at me and says, can I have your card? We're still developing our stance on water, and we'd like your input, Supervisor McDaniel. So it's a bad thing that they're not, they don't have a stance, but it's a good thing that we're actually going to be able to partake and have some input on our, our water issues here. Also got to meet with Senator Dianne Feinstein's staff. The senator wasn't available, but we, we got our top, top three folks sit down with us, as well as her chief of staff, did stick his, stick his head in. The good thing about getting the chief of staff to stick his head is because we've formed a relationship. He did live a brief time here in the city of Atwater, working on other, other items. Had quite a memorable experience, and it's not something I'd share on the dais, but I'd like to share with a lot of folks, because it is actually quite humorous, but to say that, Senator Dianne Feinstein does know Atwater, and we are definitely on the chief of staff's mind, so we can always reach out to her. Also had an opportunity to meet with Congressman Bill Schuster, who is the Transportation Chair. He has become a friend, and we're able to share our issues and what, what our struggle is here of needing some transportation dollars. Also in that meeting was Congressman Rodney Davis out of Illinois. He is also on the Transportation Committee, and the one who was able to pull this together for us was Congressman Jeff Denham, who is our subcommittee chairman on pipelines and rail, and hopefully in the, if everything goes right, he will be our next Transportation Chairman, who, as you know, still has property here in this area. Next day, Thursday, we were able to get up really quick, and US Department of Ag and Natural Resources, that meeting there was in response to the flood project, where we got awarded ten million dollars from the USDA that we've been lobbying for, for two years. And what we've done is, now with the Natural Resources Agency, is we don't have to buy the land now, so it's going to save the county probably, probably, we're looking, it's over a third of the cost in savings, so these farmers who actually own the land will be able to continue to use the land, will create aneasement, and they can farm it, so we will not be pulling it out of farm, out of agriculture. So that, that's really good news, and there's actually going to be extra monies available to help us in this transition as well, so this project is going forward, and we're getting, we're more excited now than even receiving the ten million dollars. Also had a really good meeting with US Department of Interior, that's the Bureau of Reclamation. The good thing about it is, we do have James Peterson as one of our lobbyists from the firm. He used to be Dianne Feinstein's water guy, and so he was able to brief me going into the meeting, and we got to hold them, hold them to the fire, pretty much. It was, it was a pretty good session. What came out of it, the good thing was, is we had a president appointee from the administration who was new on the job and who was there to find out what the problems were and what the struggles were, and we were able to share that with him. It was actually, we're, we're still trying to get the numbers from the site reservoir and the reservoir up above Fryent. I just went blank on it. Huh? Temperance Flat. Temperance Flat. And so the Bureau has been working on these numbers, it's a study for over ten years, it's been a decade. It's, they have no excuse of why they haven't produced these numbers for us, so we can get to building this dam, and so we were able to hold them to the fire, and it was good seeing an appointee there who was really taking notes and ended up leaving right after that to go report out, because he was a little upset with it as well. We also got to go to the US Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, that was more on a chromium six issue for the city of Los Banos. Their chromium levels aren't getting higher, but the regulations keep getting harder, and so where they're having to send out letters and they have people afraid, the state levels are such a low mark that they can't hit that mark, and yet they're still way below the federal standards. So we're pleading with the, the federal government to try to help us with those, with that issue. Met with the US Department of Transportation, we got to talk about all our projects. Like to say, they're very familiar with our Fastlane grant that we've applied for, and it's moving forward, and I was actually very impressed at how detailed they were on this particular item, and after four years, it's good to know in the, well, after three years, in the fourth year, that they really know all about it, and the movement of goods issue, and they knew our transportation and our, our commute patterns. And then after that, we got to, the last meeting of Thursday was with Congressman Jeff Denham's staff, so this wasn't with the congressman himself, but we were able to meet with staff and get some direction on the congressman's stance on some of the votes that he had, had last week. As you know, last week was a big deal. There were some big House votes that happened, we were there to witness it, and it was actually quite an experience to hear the conversations with a lot of these congressmen who didn't know how they were going to vote until they stepped on the floor, until they got the real amendments and everything that they've been working for to get in it to, to allow them to vote for it. So, and what was good about it is our congressman's staff was able to brief us and actually take down some detailed information of where we need help here in our area. So besides that, I did bring my hole binder with all my notes. If there's any questions, I'd be willing to answer any of them, but I'll, I'll let the councilman who participated talk about the city issues and that.
Any further questions or comments for Supervisor McDaniel from the council? You get off chief.
Thanks, yeah. So it was, overall, it was a very productive and a good trip, and I have a family emergency, so I'll be vacating the meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Okay, next item, please.
Item two, potential purchase of OPAGOV software and support services. This could be from Plants Director Deel.
Good evening, City Council. Today we are basically asking for a direction from the council to. council to prepare, prepare agreement or contract to get this financial transparency software. It's gonna, going to be a software and a customer support, possibly bring that contract for, in front of the council next meeting on May 22nd for possibly taking an action. I do have Steve, I'm gonna probably miss your last name, Zalani. He's going to basically show us how this program will work and what different features it does have. So he will just take it from here.
Mayor Price, Council, Atwater residents, thank you for hosting me this evening. It's great to be here. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, perfect. So Scott and Laquinda were gracious enough to host me at, at City Hall a couple of weeks ago. It's great to be here again. And we love the opportunity to partner with everyone here. You're probably wondering what exactly is OpenGov. And so there's a couple of slides here we can, we can point to as well. And really, just, just to start off, I've, I've been with OpenGov now for two and a half years. We've actually been around now formally for about four to five years. We're based up in, in the San Francisco area. We are now working with more than half of all cities and counties in California at this point, and more than fourteen hundred governments actually nationwide. OpenGov is really a platform that, that is allowing us to really partner with governments, specifically city managers, city council members, and of course residents, to get a, a true understanding of how money is being allocated within, within the city, both from expenditures and also from a revenue standpoint as well. We really got our start as mostly a transparency company, really allowing citizens to get an understanding of how money is actually being allocated, broken out by different departments and expense types within specific programs. But really, over the past couple of years, we've really transitioned into a full-fledged operational tool to allow people like Laquinda and her staff to build and operate their budget and then of course communicate it in a way that's visual and understanding for city council members as well. Just as, kind of a repeat here, we are now working with more than fourteen hundred governments across forty-eight states, more than half of all cities and counties in California as well. And, and the thing to point out here is, is really, we really got our start working with smaller communities. We are now working with the city of Merced and Modesto, a little bit larger. But really, we actually got our start working with much, much smaller communities as well. And the point here is that it's, it's a really flexible platform and it's, it's working with counties all the way up to LA County and all the way down to some very small cities across America as well. Just going off of whatever you mentioned, we really, we really think, in, in your role as city council members, as mayor, as, as city manager and finance teams, your roles are getting tougher and tougher as the years go by because we're extracting so much, so much information, we're connecting to much more digital world. And so we really think here at OpenGov, we want to give those tools and resources to the people that are making those decision, decisions on behalf of our communities in much more effective and efficient manner. Typically in the past, and a lot of this information is currently being stored in Excel sheet, spreadsheets and legacy accounting systems that, that doesn't actually allow council members, staff members within Atwater or residents as well to get a true understanding of, of how, truly what the, what the priorities are within, within the government. Really just doing an overview quickly of, of what, you can, you can go ahead and move along, Laquinda. We're good. Thanks. Just to give a, a brief overview in terms of what actually we're providing here today, as, as mentioned, we, we've really transformed as a company to make this a much more of a management tool for your government. And the first component, of course, the, first of three critical pillars, which is actually building and operating the budget process. This is a relatively very new capability we've, we've released about four to five months ago and a, a good number of our current partners are, have now adopted it. The budget process, as, as many people may be aware of, is, is very burdened down with a lot of clerical work, a lot of back and forth between department heads, filling out Excel, some of these older Excel spreadsheets in terms of actually gaining some meaningful analysis in terms of historical context. What if we spend the past? What if we adjust the sales tax measure? What's gonna be an impact on our revenues? That's, that's really what's missing. And so what Budget Builder is really offering is, is allowing us to bring all this in one context and in one place to collaborate around the budget. Awesome. Thanks. The second component, this is the, the second of three components, which is, okay, we've, we've now adopted the budget. What, what happens next? Well, of course, people like Laquinda and Scott, we've got to prevent, we've got to present a, a regular quarterly or monthly financial update to our council to show, here's how we're performing year-to-date, here's the money that's coming in, here's how we're allocating to certain programs. Well, that, that's a constant engagement that, that we have with both our, our council members and our citizens. So really what OpenGov Intelligence means is we're, we're bringing those, those, that information, those analytics throughout, throughout the year. It doesn't stop with the budget, of course. So bringing that information to you from a financial and budget standpoint throughout the year. And then really the last component here, just, just as I mentioned, this is actually where we really got our start, which is really a transparency platform. We're not gonna get away from that. We, we want to allow our residents, our council members, our, our communities to get a true understanding of, of how are we actually allocating our, to, to certain programs? What, what truly are the priorities within our community? What types of programs are we gonna implement in the future? So it's not just looking at how we done year-to-date, but also how are we gonna plan for the future to be able to attract new growth to the, to the community, especially during some, some pretty tough economic times as well. Really just bringing this all together, as, just a couple of things about, about OpenGov. We work primarily with, only with, with local governments. This is not something where we're going out to the private market. We have a one-hundred percent focus around local and state governments all across America, because we truly think that's, that's really where our, our passion is. That's something that's been missing over the past couple of decades as technology's been accelerating at this pace, but our governments have been, have been left behind. And that's really where we, we want to come into play and truly partner with, with governments all across America. The last point I'd mention is that we have actually former government financial, financial officers that are gonna be actually worked, they, they go and work with the government. So we actually have people who have actually worked in government, who are actually gonna be the people that you work most closely with to get implemented with the platform and an ongoing engagement with it as well. That really wraps up my, 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 our story here, but happy to take a couple of minutes for any questions or, or feedback. I appreciate everyone's time.
Any questions or comments at this time from the council?
If Scott can just kind of give us a, a narrative to put everything in layman terms for everybody here and myself included.
Yeah, I gotta admit, at first I was very skeptical, skeptical. I didn't think that the, the, the cost is maybe gonna be worth the value of what you get. But after having met and looked at it, I think there's definitely a benefit to this for the community. I think it's actually helpful for you too, as well as staff. And one of the key things that we looked at, he mentioned, Steve talked about it, was the Budget Builder. You can actually have a loaded-up budget and as you make changes to expenditures or revenue, you can project out what it looks like in real time. And that's a very valuable tool. There were also some, some things that were there in terms of dashboards. I think you mentioned the dashboards. They're kind of ready-made applications or, you know, not, not permits, but, help me out Steve, not widgets, but they're, they're basically reports that are ready for staff to use. I think it can help track expenditures in a lot better capacity than what we have now. And you all know, the community knows, the council knows, you know, financial issues are taking priority in this community. And I think that we need to be able to express that in the clearest way. And this can do it in a way that is much clearer than what we can do with spreadsheets and PowerPoints. And it's real-time, people can look at it at their own leisure. And it's updated periodically as we provide or push data to them, it's updated. And so it can be a pretty powerful tool.
But, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Vineyard punched in.
Yeah, just got a question here. Is there a need to implement all three of those sections at once? Or is there the possibility of starting, say, with the transparency first and then building on that? What's, I mean, it's, is there a benefit to that?
Yeah, great, great question. The short answer is absolutely. And, and, and it's really, we want to provide the most value for, for the governments on the platform. So if we, if we choose that, you know, maybe just doing one or twos to start would be most beneficial at this point, totally get it. One, one thing I would say is that the platform from, from its design works truly best with a full integrated suite to allow yourself to build. The, the point is, is that they all communicate with one another. So once we build and operate our, our budget process, and we truly think that's the most, that's the most important part of this entire tool, we build the budget, we finalize the budget after budget workshops, council approval. Well, then of course, that feeds into the rest of the platform. We want to take then that budget, operate against it, and then eventually communicate it to the public to allow them to get an understanding. Here's what we're truly focused on for the year. So the short answer, yes. But in terms of a longer answer, it works best as one, one integrated solution.
Okay.
Great question.
The other one was, when would this be planned to be implemented?
Right. So, you know, we'd like to get your consent tonight to allow us to do the professional agreement that will carry us forward. We're looking at a pretty quick turnover on this. I think that we actually, actually have this up and going pretty soon after the budget is adopted. And some of the tools, we could actually even use probably even before then. So we're not talking like months, we're talking like, you know, a few weeks to kind of get things going. And then we can go back and kind of provide more historical data as we populate the older data. We want to start with the budget going forward. We can actually go back and provide other data to look in the past. That might take a little longer, but this is, this is a, a quick thing going on.
Okay. And it's gonna be, it can be easily integrated with what we have now. I mean, I know we have Springbook now, but even with the, the other problems we're having, servers and stuff, we can still integrate this fairly easily.
Great, great, great question. Actually, a very good point that I should mention. OpenGov's entirely, it's, it's, I'm sure everyone's heard the term the cloud. Everything's fully backed by the cloud. So it's, it's not installing anything on your hard drive here at Atwater. We actually fully host and maintain this information, which does two things. One is reduces the, the amount of time Scott said to really get set up. The second thing is we're, we're fully host, we're assuming the cost of delivering new updates and new components. That's, nothing is being installed on-premise. So that's, that's, that's one thing I would add. In terms of utilization with, with Springbook, we now, of the fourteen hundred governments we now work with now, I think over about a hundred, a hundred and twenty of them are Springbook customers. We, we work very well with Springbook. In fact, we, we actually do, can provide a direct integration with it as well, if that's something that is of interest as well. Scott and I have talked about that briefly. And then one thing I would, just to repeat, I mean, these are, these are former government finance officers that, to Scott's point, during that implementation process, it's about one to two-week turnaround. And those are former government finance officers that are taking your financial information and getting, getting you up and running on it.
Thank you.
Great.
Ms. Fear, did you have a question for him? Okay. All right. So you, I know, but I, but you had the, the body language. Mr. Creighton.
If you could explain to the general public, what is the benefit to them? That's why we're, we're talking about this. So can you address that?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and great question. This, this is why we, this is why we got our start at building, building this platform, is because when we are living in a time of a great, greater and greater apathy towards, towards our governments, we truly think that we want to, we want to deliver the tools and the resources to allow our council members and our staff members to make much better decisions. But none of that happens without having the full trust and credibility from our, from our citizens who are, everyone here is communicating with a smartphone, a mobile device, accessing social media. And that's truly where we want to take OpenGov, is to allow ourselves, when it comes to our communication with our governments, to give them the tools and resources they need to communicate in the 21st century role.
Thank you.
Okay. So entertain a motion? Oh, you want to have a, something to say?
Good question. It's, it's a, it's a range based on what, what Atwater would want to do with, with the OpenGov platform. It's, it's truly a range and the way we do it, it's simply based off of the total budget size. And the way that works is the amount of information coming into the platform. That's essentially how it's reflected there. It goes anywhere from between about four thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars.
Period. That's the cost.
That is the, that's, that's the annual fee. And then there's a one-time implementation to do the onboarding and setup. I think about three to, three to four.
Thirty-two hundred.
And that's just a one-time fee. Something I would quickly add is when you're talking a lot of these, these, some of these legacy accounting systems, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars in implementation costs on some of these accounting systems. And so what OpenGov is doing is we're actually, if we think about it, all these tools and resources, it's actually a lot lower than, than what you would see out there because of the, the, everything's in the cloud and we're actually doing most of the, most of the work to assume the information and get it, get it up, up, up to speed.
Mr. McBride.
Yeah. In the proposal the council has, we do have the cost. It's, it's basically the first year looking at twenty-six thousand, six fifty-three. And the way that we would allocate that is we can do that through either the finance or IT budget, where every department gets a share of the cost based upon some variables, proportions. So this is not like an all general fund hit. This is spread across the board. So that's how it would work out.
Now, Ms. Fear has a question.
Yeah, my question is for our Finance Director. After reviewing this, do you feel this is a helpful tool? Or what is, what is your thought on the program?
Well, definitely, I was in love with, for the Budget Builder because right now I have to work with all these spreadsheets. So each department head has to submit their budget to me, then I'll have to input all that data. So with this software, it's basically live online. So I can just assign their funds to them and be like, okay, this is your portion. You have to complete this. So it seems like it, it would be less manual work than what we have right now. So it definitely, then even for public side, they have more access to all the actual versus budget where we stand each month. So once we are done with the closing our books end of the month, then we can just upload that information to this website and you will see in a graphs or charts format to see where we stand. So I think it's a pretty beneficial.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Okay. Well, I think Scott explained the money portion of it. I think. Any case, so entertain a motion? Mr. Vineyard.
Go ahead.
This is motion to give staff direction to draft up an agreement.
I just want to make mention also that, that, you know, we, you know, to have these type of tools, you know, when it comes to the budgetary type things, you know, as Laquinda was saying, you know, with what she has right now, it's a little archaic. And, and this, this simplifies it. It makes her job easier, it makes it more accurate, makes it more in tune to what we, we need to have so that you all will get proper information. And that's, that's really what it's all about. You know, the, as you alluded to, the transparency into this, this is, this is a big deal. And especially in these, you know, times when, you know, the budgetary picture is not all that hot, you know. I think something like this to help us, you know, to be more acute to what we need to do is, is gonna be essential. Really do.
May I just, one point? Just, ma'am, going off your question, great question, by the way, I'm sure it's, whatever, a lot of people are wondering is, is the actual cost of this. One thing I, I would add is that what a lot of the governments that we work with tell us, man, you know, we're facing a, a budget shortfall, just a lot of the situations and circumstances and challenges that Atwater has also faced with reduced staffing and budget shortfall and deficits. That's exactly the time, that's why we built this company and that's why we do what we do, is because those governments need it the most to actually make those decisions, decisions with data in, in real time, just, just what you alluded to, Mayor. So.
Ms. Fear.
In drafting the agreement, is it an annual agreement? Is it a long-term agreement? What would be our liability?
Yep. Good, good question. We, we can be flexible. It's a standard three-year agreement, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be three years.
So the question was about ownership of the information in the cloud. I don't know if you can comment on that or not.
In terms of where the data is stored and secured.
Our information you upload, we still own all that. So if we chose not to continue for three years down the road, we don't have to have a big buyout or any type of thing like that. That would be in the agreement that that's our information, we own it.
Absolutely. That's, that's stated in the agreement. And at, at the, at the end of the agreement, that's essentially where, you know.
So you put that in, Laquinda?
We still have to draft that, yes. We will put that in. So I mean, all that information, finance will be providing them that information on monthly basis or regular basis. So we will have full control of that information.
And city attorney would have that information and look it over, I'm sure, you know, forming content before implementing. Okay. Ms. Fear.
Okay. So just clarification on the motion. We're giving direction to move forward, draw the motion. Then we will review that before anything's executed so we can double-check the cost and what the terms are and...
With the three dashboards.
Right. I just want to make sure that it's gonna come back to us and we're, we're gonna see that.
We will.
And we'll talk about it before we...
Yes. Yes.
Correct.
Any other discussion, other questions? Okay, call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
At this time, we have the consent calendar, a notice to the public. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent cal, consent calendar. And these items are considered to be, to be routine. All items on the consent calendar are normally approved under one motion or by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that council members would like to remove for separate consideration? I'd like to remove item number six. Any other items? Okay, for the remainder, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve consent.
For the remainder of the consent calendar, we remove item number six.
They're stereo, okay. Okay. Okay, okay, call for the question.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Item number six is the approving, amended, and restated property tax sharing agreement between the city of Atwater and the county of Merced.
Yeah, Mayor and council, happy to report on this item tonight. This has been an undertaking for several months, maybe even about a year. This agreement that we're looking at tonight would allow us to share more of the property taxes that we would receive under future annexations. Currently, the arrangement is set up where the county gets a greater share than we do. As proposed, this agreement is similar to Los Banos and Merced. They were ones that went forward before we have taken action. It just ensures that you've got a better share going forward of the property tax value. The way it will work is the county will retain what's currently at value, and then we share the new money that's created, basically new increment from increased value of the property. Under the old agreement, it was 80-20. Under the new agreement, it's 75-25, so it's a 5% increase. It doesn't sound like it's huge, but it actually has a pretty decent impact for us. And then also, as part of this agreement, we would be eliminating what's called a per capita fee. That's a fee that we pay for population above 25,000. In exchange for that, however, the county wants to receive 5% of our sales tax. Every city in the county has already provided that. Maybe perhaps with the exception of Livingston, it doesn't have a count, an agreement in place, and so that's been going on for years. We were actually asked to do that back in 2002 under the old agreement. It was never executed, so it never occurred. We've taken a look, and it's in your packet, kind of a projection going forward into the future years to see how the trade-off would look. And there's definitely that benefit from eliminating the per capita and working on the sales tax. That alone is a benefit to us. And then keep in mind, we have other projects that come on board that are annexed, a little bit greater share of the property taxes than we currently would. And so, we did also provide in the packet a model the county's prepared for us, kind of looking at a tax rate area to see how the allocation would, would work under the, under the old arrangement and the new arrangement. And you can see, when it, when it nets out, basically, the city's more about, about 44% of the total, and the county's at 55%. And this is very similar to what the other agencies that have adopted these have. And so, we'd like to take this forward tonight. We would just let you know that we will have to bring back sales tax sharing agreement separately by ordinance, and we're going to be drafting that, perhaps, to be on the agenda for the 22nd. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. McBride? I can only say that the per capita component to this right here is a big deal. We've been paying out a lot of money for that particular line item, and I'm particularly glad that that has been addressed in here. Mr. Vineyard?
I just, just want to make sure, clarify that, because Measure H is part of kind of our sales tax, that's not going to get touched, correct? It's just, it's the remainder of the...
Right, so we'll, we'll address sales tax separately, and that will not be included. It is, is one, it is a portion of what they call the Bradley-Burns, which is the 1%. It's not any special assessments, any special taxes, it's just the 1%.
Thank you.
Okay, so, there's no other discussion? Entertain a motion? I'll move to approve as been presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
So now we move to item 15?
Item number 15 is awarding a cooperative purchase for two new 2017 police utility vehicles. Sergeant Nowitzki.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. Staff has researched and prepared a report in regards to the awarding of a cooperative purchase for the two new 2017 police utility vehicles. It is recommended that the city council consider awarding a cooperative purchase in the form approved by the city attorney to American Chevrolet of Modesto for the purchase of two new 2017 police utility vehicles in the amount not to exceed $75,346.48 and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the city. A little bit of background of this is, the city police department currently has a need for two new police vehicles. The vehicles will be replacing two 2007 Ford Crown Victoria patrol vehicles that have been in service for approximately 10 years with mileage exceeding 141,000, that was taken a little bit, bit ago for unit 2016, and 136,000 for unit 2017. These vehicles were retired from patrol use years ago, and were assigned to the school resource officer program. And then they were put in use again as patrol vehicles because of our need. These vehicles have excess maintenance and repair costs. If the city council approves the purchase of the replacement vehicles, the vehicles currently in use can be reassigned to other uses within the department. In accordance with the city, Atwater Purchasing Manual, Section 9, Procurement Methods, Cooperative Purchases, the city may participate in purchases and contracts established by other political jurisdictions provided the cooperative agreement is established following the competitive bid process similar to the city's formal contract procedure. The city manager or designated may authorize the award of cooperative purchase agreements up to $25,000. The city council approval is required for the award of any cooperative purchase of $25,001 more, or more. This process is called piggybacking. The cooperative purchase allows the city to, the ability to piggyback on the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department recent bid process. The intent of the piggyback is to uncover opportunities for the cost and, and time savings. American Chevrolet of Modesto has provided a quote for the purchase of two 2017 Chevy Tahos at the same purchase price that was offered to Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department, and that's under Exhibit A in your packet. The attached quote for the vehicles will expire on May 11, 2017. If the deadline is not met for the cost of the vehicle, the, the increase is an estimated 3.5% more for the next model, which is also attached in Exhibit B. These, these are Chevy Tahos, and if approved, these vehicles will be utilized Measure H funds that are currently allocated within the fiscal year 2016-2017. Retrofitting the equipment is also necessary to make these vehicles street-ready. We're currently working on the additional necessary equipment will be purchased separately, and will be brought to the city councils at the next, next regular staff meeting as, as we're still researching procurement options, and, and I'll update kind of that. Is the funding for retrofitting equipment will also be purchased utilizing current allocated funding within fiscal year 2016-2017. I'm currently working with the, the bid process for piggybacking possibly from Topeka County with the company that will be looking to do our equipment. They've already provided a price for us. Upon approval of the purchase agreement, sufficient funding for the two 2017 police utility vehicles is available in the fiscal year 2016-17 budget, Measure H fund. This purchase is not creating an additional expense, however, inter-fund transfer will be required to reallocate existing funds from one account to another. So, with that, with that account is, we did not, because of recruiting, we've been having people in backgrounds, we weren't able to fill that position. And that created, where we had money that we're not going to be able to fill that position by July, so that created the money to be able, that, that was already allocated for this year. So, it's not creating a new expense, and it will be, that, that funding will be, it was a vacancy of a position of one of the police officers, and we'll be able to use that money. Do you have any questions? I just wanted to reiterate, it's not new money that we're seeking, it's already been allocated.
Uh, anybody, yes, Mr. Vineyard?
I noticed on your proposal in here, it says no ballistic panels. Now, is that the way the, the Stanislaus Sheriff's Office also ordered them?
Yeah, we got exactly what they had, so we just piggybacked off of their, that's why they marked no ballistic panels.
Sorry, how important are those to the officers, or to your department, to having those?
They're important. Some of our vehicles have them, some of them don't.
What's the cost?
That's going to be, for the Tahoe, that would be an extra cost that we would probably be able to look at later. I don't have it offhand.
Thank you.
Mr. Creighton?
Motion to approve.
My second.
Any further discussion? Anyone from the audience wishing to comment?
I just want to know if you checked Merced Chevrolet?
We, we did a piggyback off of American Chevrolet. We didn't, we didn't go with Merced Chevrolet. We just did a piggyback from a current agency's bid process.
Yeah, just to comment, thank you, officer, by the way. The piggyback allows us to move forward in a, in a procedure where we take a bid that's already been developed. Otherwise, we have to develop the whole process, advertise it, and it's, it's a way to move things more expediently. And also, we tend to get a better value because the agency we're working with buys in bigger bulk than we do, and then kind of leverage a better discount than we could on our own for two vehicles.
And if I recall correctly, when this particular style of vehicle was being discussed, we were talking another 25 or so thousand above what this purchase price is today, correct?
You're talking, it's...
The Tahos?
Yeah, this is the, this is the price they originally gave us.
Okay, because I recall 50 grand each on...
Well, that was with the equipment, the 75 covers the vehicles.
Okay, very good. Mr. Creighton?
I just wanted to answer your question. The state goes to the, like a clearinghouse, they say they want a bid for X equipment. All dealers are allowed to bid on that, and so if Courtesy didn't do it, or they, they're not maybe low enough, that's how they don't get chosen for this when they piggyback and do things. It's not the staff's not picking Courtesy, it's just they weren't on that, they probably chose not to do it, or maybe they didn't have the, the vehicles. So, I think I wanted to answer your question more clearly on that.
Okay. A call for the question?
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Take care of them.
Okay. Item 16, we have declaring sole source and awarding purchase of police equipment. We have Officer Sargentson tonight.
Range Master Sargentson.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for allowing me to come speak with you. As we discussed on the previous council meeting where I came and talked to you about the firearms, we've put together this, this staff report with the help of staff, and thank, Laquender, thank God. This has been a very valuable experience for me, that I've been provided by the chief of police, and I appreciate that. Stating on the background, as you guys know, these H and K USP-45s we've had for approximately 12-plus years. They've reached their service life. They're approximately anywhere between 16,000, if not more, depending on the officer who shoots the weapons. The analysis is, over the past several months, the Atwater Police Department is testing and evaluating several possible firearms for replacing the current duty weapon. The Glock, the FN, which is a Fabrique Nationale, Smith &amp; Wesson, and the Sig Sauer have been tested and evaluated. Of these firearms, the Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P chambered 9mm was favored by our department and the Range Masters. The weapon has interchangeable palm swivel grips, which has also been attached to you so that you can see the actual weapon and the, the benefits of having this weapon. This weapon, like I said, will be able to be configured in each officer's individually for feel. So, each, each member will have the better opportunity to feel better about the weapon. Furthermore, the weapon has ambidextrous controls, therefore eliminating the need for the agency to purchase left-handed weapons. It should be noted that the weapon was also chosen by our neighboring allied agency, which we piggyback, which was the Merced Police Department, which they also are moving away from the H and K USP-45. In accordance with the city of Atwater Purchasing Manual, Section 9, Procurement Message, commodities are sole source, sole source purchases, which this agency is the region area that sells these firearms to, to departments, so that they do not have to be registered, such as when the question was, why we, we're not going locally with State Stop. Unfortunately, with, speaking with Joey Verna, those weapons would have to be individually registered to the officers, which is not an option, obviously. So, we're, we have to go through the sole source process and go through an agency that is allowed by Smith &amp; Wesson to sell directly to the agencies. So, that's, hence the reason we're going with a Pro Force out of LA, Glendale area. Staff is seeking city council approval for purchase of 40 handguns, 40 holsters, and an extra 10 magazines, replaced magazines, which the total cost is $20,073.93. specification and cost estimates are attached in Exhibit A. Following city council approval, staff will place the order for equipment. Processing and delivery will take approximately six days. Delivery is anticipated for mid-July, next fiscal year. Because the delivery of the equipment invoicing and offsetting revenue will not occur until next fiscal, or until fiscal year 2017-2018, it is appropriate to include the funding and revenue in next year's budget. The approach, the approach will ultimately provide the police officers with new handguns in July, rather than extending it out to September or late October. Should the city council award the purchase of the above equipment, staff will include the purchase cost and offsetting revenue in the fiscal year 2017-2018 operating budget. Next year's budget will appropriate funding in both the General Fund and Measure H Fund for the total of $20,073.93. The portion allocated in the General Fund, estimated at $13,000, will match the amount of offsetting revenue for the resale of existing or exiting equipment. Again, estimated $13,000 resulting in no fiscal impact to the General Fund. The remaining balance, estimated $6,987, will be allocated in the Measure H Fund, because it is estimated the current fiscal year Measure H will have a savings of $11,000 that will be returned to the Measure H Fund. There will be no fiscal impact to Measure H. So, there's no new money based on this purchase. The savings in Measure H is attributed to salary savings from a vacated position during this fiscal year. This staff report is submitted to the council for its consideration and possible action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Creighton?
I just wanted you to go over the, the reason, one of the reasons is the ammunition cost, that there's a slight cost that we're going to incur, but we're going to make that back every year thereafter on our ammunition purchases and the training of that, right?
Yes, sir. And I, I wanted to bring those updated because they're so drastically changing. By the time we got here and provided it, it would... By the time we got here and provided it, it would-
But a rough estimate, I mean, we're saving-
Yes. $11 per box for duty ammo and $12 to $15 for ammunition-
Which we're talking $20,000 potentially a year.
Yes. And the good thing about the other ammo, and I didn't address it here, is that the 45 caliber, 185 grain that we discussed in the previous council meeting-
Right.
I wanted to inform you that we're going to be using that for training, so that's not going to be an issue further.
And with the training, we're going to burn up all the ammo in the armory, then we're going to give, sell those guns back to the agent, the company, right?
Yes, we're going to have two different sources actually for income. The local, the State Stop has allowed, the officers who do agree to purchase their weapons, he's going to, he's going to actually buy those weapons for us.
Great.
And provide the city with a check.
Right.
So that the officers don't have to go to La Brea, or I mean, Brea, California and travel all the way there for, to purchase their new weapon.
And then were you able, separate of that, to work with our local range that we'll be able to do training? Hopefully, you guys were going to work that out to where we'd be able to send the ammo over there, that you'd be able to log how much training, each, each gun's actually being, rounds passing through those guns?
Yeah, we'll be able to track it a lot better, especially if we're using our local range. However, there is no current contract in place to match through Gun Runner. We just, it's actually part of our MOU that states that officers will be provided a certain amount of ammo based on their condition of employment at whatever level-
But we could use this reign with Joey's, what I'm getting at?
Yes, and we can, yeah. So it'll, it'll be a matter of whether it's physically responsible for, for us to make that move, but I believe it will be.
Okay. I make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second. Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, basically is, we're basically essentially getting $20,000, excuse me, $20,000 worth of updated weapons that are all consistent. So if an officer should lose or run out of ammo, the other officer next to him can provide the same ammo. It makes it extremely important out in a firefight, but we're getting it $20,000 with the equipment for $7,000. I think that's incredible.
Yes, sir. It is, it's a great deal.
Absolutely, and my thought, you know, you know, going to the 9mm and velocities that, you know, we're talking about and how that, how that particular handgun performs, I love mine.
Yes, sir. You know, I'm a 45 guy, so it was really, it was real hard for me to grab it, but I got to admit that I'm, I'm falling in love with the, the new ballistics of the weapons and the ammunition that we're looking at is comparable and actually exceeds the 45. So with the information, and we got to take these into account as the officer involved shootings that the local agencies have, it's important to really study those.
Yep.
And so with the poor performance of some of those weapons and the ammunition, we had to make this change.
Okay. A call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you for all the work you put into that.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
I'm still looking for the Chevrons.
Easy, easy. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'll take about a 10-minute break. Don't go anywhere.
Are you standing up, bro? I need something to eat.
No, but I can work in my face. So I'm thinking my favorite.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Okay, we're back in session. Next agenda item, please.
Next item is item number 12, request to hold red ribbon walk. And I believe we might have some, thank you, some members of the public here tonight to talk about this.
Hello, my name's Miranda Maderas. God gave me a little idea one day inside of my head. He told me, because I've been wanting to help the community and the youth and the kids and the people that have used drugs and that need help. And I'm a product of, lives do change. I got almost 12 years clean. And I recognize that in the community and Wenton and Atwater, I've never seen a red ribbon put on any post, any pole or anything. And they've done it in Merced before. And I wanted to be able to have permission to get a big group of kids in the community to be able to tie red ribbons around. We're going to start at Determent, go on Bellevue, go to Wentway, go towards Wenton. And then we're going to go on Cypress, Vine, Walnut and Wenton Way. And we wanted to see if we can have permission to hold the, we're going to have like an event afterwards for like the kids, airbrush, tattoos, face paintings, bounce house, barbecue speakers. These are motivational speakers for teens to, you know, if they need a place to go, like if they want to get off something to come, to let them know that they're welcome. You know what I mean? Because a lot of people don't know where to go if they want to get off drugs. I was one of those people did not know where to go when I wanted to get off, I had to get in trouble. So I feel like we need to reach out to the community and try to help the people that are in trouble that want help and don't know about it. So we'll have motivational speakers, we'll have volleyball, horseshoes. This is, this is our plan and this will be a nonprofit organization. It was something that, like I said, an idea that God gave me in my head because I wanted to try to help teens. And I've seen a lot of teens in trouble and they, I know some of them want help and I don't, I want to reach out and try to help people to try to get clean. And like I said, I've been a member of Narcotics Anonymous for almost 12 years. It's not going to be Narcotics Anonymous associated, it's just for the community, just so you guys know. This will be held on Saturday, October 28th. Well, you know, it's hugs, not drugs. It's like I say, I don't know if we need to have escorts, how that works. But we're willing to do whatever it takes to try to get this going.
Where did Chief go?
At a meeting.
Okay. Mr. McRae, can you shed some light on to what might be some of the obstacles?
Yeah, so just want to maybe some clarification so everyone understands. There's just a portion of the event that would be in Atwater, that would basically be the walk from Determent down Bellevue. And then once we get to Wenton Way and start heading north, it's kind of out of the city limits. So I would assume that you were working with the county on the park and other issues.
That's what I'm going to be trying to do. I don't know where to go. I need leads so I can go there and get this approved. We're doing this early to get, to get funds so we can get everything started. We're going to have a barbecue and stuff like that for the community, so.
Right, and we appreciate that, you letting us know very early about this.
Right.
So in talking to the chief today at staff meeting, he didn't have any specific concerns. You know, it looks like he's back in the room and can help us. But we did talk about it and recognize that we're only involved for just a small portion, which is basically from Bellevue Road to Determent through Wenton Way, and so.
And Chief Joseph, and to be clear, you're just walking the sidewalks, correct?
Yeah, we're going to be on each side of the sidewalks. I don't know how many people are going to come. I don't care if it's just me and my family, it's going to, you know, it's going to happen regardless if we get approved for this. We're going to have both sides of the roads with red ribbons and then both sides of the roads going towards Wenton. Because I've, I've lived here like a majority of my life. You know, I want to give back what was freely given to me and try to help people out.
Chief Joseph, do you have any inputs as to the red ribbon walk?
Well, I first want to say I've known this young lady for a long time. She's, her and I have gone way back. And regarding that, I don't, we don't have a problem doing that. The only issue we have is security going into Determent. You're telling me you're not going through Determent, you're starting there, going, going west towards Wenton Way, then going north towards Wenton. And then, but once you get into Wenton, I mean, I can ask the volunteers and they can assist. However, the police department, we don't have the manpower per se to orchestrate that, but we can do that with the volunteer squad. And we'll assist you in that respect, it's not a big deal. But once you get into Wenton, you have to consult with the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I have, I have that on the list.
Oh, good, okay, I was going to say, because we have, we have to stop with the county, the county line of that portion. I, no, you can do what you do. I know you very well and that's fine with me.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And I would suggest also that you make appointments with our District 3 supervisor, Darren McDaniel. And with Supervisor Pereira.
McDaniel and then?
And Pereira.
Do you have a phone number?
I don't off the top of my feeble head. But if you call the county switchboard or you can even, if you can go online, they both, you know, can be found on the county website.
Are they part of the?
Well, you're going to be in District 3, which is Darren McDaniel's, and then you'll be going into Supervisor Pereira's, which is in Wenton. So if you went and contacted both of them, they could probably help to coordinate and maybe, you know, give you some guidance as to how you could improve the walk and.
Okay, so those are the two people I need to get ahold of for the other areas, right?
For, for Atwater and for Wenton.
For Atwater and for Wenton, okay.
Yep, okay. And Councilmember Vineyard, did you have other?
Yeah, actually I did. I got to put my other hat on because the chief wasn't here. So I was going to try to speak for the volunteers. We shouldn't have any problem doing it. My concern is, I'd like to do that with, with the volunteers because getting you through the intersections, we could shut the intersections down, we can move you down the street faster. And then, Chief, I mean, we do go all the way to Gertrude when we're doing funerals if we could possibly take them that far, insist that way.
You just got to consult with the sheriff out of respect here.
Absolutely. So I want to coordinate with you, so after the meeting, if you stay that long, I'll give you my business card.
Okay.
And we can get together.
Sounds great, because this is like something that, like I said, God gave me this idea and I really want to do it. Is that it?
And you can get my phone number off, online too, if you don't want to stay that late.
Are you going to be one of the motivational speakers? Because you certainly sound like one.
You know, I could be. I have another, another person that's going to be doing it that is into sports and stuff like that. I found him at my work. I work at Savmar. I found him right across the counter. It's like right just before, just after I started planning this, it's like God brought him into my life right across the counter.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right.
Motion to approve request.
And I'll second.
Is it?
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, call for the question.
Creighton.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Vera.
Absolutely.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Mayor Price.
I'll be there, yes.
Good job.
Next item is item 13. This is a public hearing. This is memorandum of understanding forming the Merced Irrigation Urban Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Obviously, tonight you have your Water Division Manager, Brian Shaw. And he did want me to remind the council that this is basically required to have a public hearing held. There's no specific action required by the council, just that we have the hearing, get any testimony, and then allows us to proceed to transmit, transmit this to the state. So Brian, is there anything else you wanted to say regarding this item?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, being this is a public hearing, we will open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please step forward to the podium, give your name for the record. And seeing none, closed to public hearing, bring it back to the council. Any comments or questions by the council? Mr. Creighton.
Brian, could you let the public know what we're talking about tonight?
What this is so we can join, it was voted on last meeting to join GSA for sustainable groundwater. It's an act by the state that we need to, how can I put it? Develop a program and management to groundwater depletion so we don't deplete all the water out of the ground. And it's some other things also to keep.
What role will Atwater have in this?
Pardon?
What's Atwater's role in this group?
It's, it's, it's required by the state to have a GSA in place to keep the groundwater from depletion.
I think what we're, we're discussing here tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but this was something that was presented. And we joined forces as a joint power authority on the protection of the groundwater. It was drought driven, of course, and state wanted to get their fingers into also the water underground as well as the water above ground. So basically, we are joined forces with a whole lot of other agencies, communities with, with respect to a joint power authority to protect our groundwater.
So are we becoming bound by certain criteria? What's, what's our?
No, right now what it is, is you guys adopted the MOU. And the state requires us to do a public hearing. And so in our MOU, we're going to be with MID, City of Merced, City of Livingston, Wenton Sanitation District, Kanata, La Grande. And it's, it's from the GSA which the state has come out and says that you have to be in, either have your own GSA or form with another organization or two or three, whatever, if they want to form an MOU. So what it does for us is it saves us a lot of time and energy where if you have all these different organizations putting into it, and it'll suffice what the state's wanting.
Mr. McRae.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the primary issues that the state wants is some type of tracking. They want to be able to make sure that we're tracking, that we're cooperating. And I think to answer your question, you know, are there going to be policies? Yeah, there very well could be.
So this is another agency, we report like our static drawdown, our usage, things like that. They're going to start cataloging what we're doing and not doing?
Yeah, they're trying to have a more comprehensive approach for the whole groundwater basin as opposed to just each, each community. It's a broader approach, but that's basically it. You've got the intent of it there.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Mr. Vineyard.
I just want to add a little bit to that. All, all those agencies that Mr. Shaw read off are basically have say. So if there's something in there you don't like, it's basically mitigated out. Or if there's something that you prefer, because water has no walls. It doesn't, it's not like a house, you put something in it, it, the water just goes everywhere. So we're all trying to save the water and utilize it as, as proficiently as possible. So that we still have drinking water, we still have water for our plants and our trees and our, and our agricultural. And so it's something we, instead of having 56 different GSAs or GSPs, which are Groundwater Sustainability Act and the Groundwater Sustainability Plan throughout the state, they're trying to get people, groups to join together and have less plans. That way, everybody around the same area is doing the same thing and, and saving the water.
Okay. This is an information.
Well, basically, we satisfied the requirement of having the hearing. The hearing was open, the hearing was closed. There's no additional action required by the city, so at this point we can move forward.
Okay, unless there's any other questions or comments? Okay, item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. Item 14 is adoption of resolutions regarding Ferrari Ranch, waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance number CS 980, approving pre-zoning 17-01, introducing ordinance number CS 981, approving the Ferrari Ranch Development Agreement. Mayor Council, I'm going to lead this off tonight. I think you're familiar with the project team that we've worked with for some time now on this project. Just in the audience tonight, we have Dave Doulter, he's a project manager for John Ferrari. Adjacent to him, we have Edward Schaefer, he's been the attorney assisting the project team on the project. And then just a little bit farther to the right, we have Ron System with EMC Planning. Ron was, was, his firm was consulted, has an agreement with the city to perform the EIR and some of the planning services related to the project. They basically act as, you know, an independent body in the observation of what's going on. They prepared the environmental document, which is, as you know, is a significant package, it looks like this. Also wanted to recognize Justin Hendricks, he's played a huge role in this project over, you know, really what's been several years. And so he's been very involved with what we're doing here tonight. I know that we've talked about the specific approvals related to this some time ago in a workshop to kind of really key in on what the actions are going to be. And then tonight, this is really bringing the context all together. This is all the actions and the, you know, the implications, so to speak, at one piece. And I just wanted to make a couple of observations about, you know, where we are and what has to happen from this point forward. Obviously, some of the approvals tonight, the resolutions are actionable tonight, they become, they're done. A couple of the actions are ordinances, and so this is the first start tonight. We re-advertise them and they come back for separate actions, the second reading and final adoption at a later date. And then some of the actions, like the proposed annexation application, it still has to be submitted to LAFCO for their consideration. They're on a different time schedule, they'll review it, it'll probably be several months perhaps timeframe for that. And then it also has to go to the state for their consideration, their recordation. So there's still pieces of this that have to be done. Also wanted to point out that we're working at what's called a master plan level, an intensive map level for the project. And so I know I've conveyed to you individually that you will still have a role later on at the final map level. And you also have a role at the final development plan level. Those will be separate approvals that have to come forward to this body as well as the CDRC for the recommendation. So even though some of this is wrapping up tonight, there are pieces that will still have to be taken over time. And so I hope that's occurred to everyone. We're going to go ahead and let the presentation kick off, and then before we take action, we'll have a hearing, obviously, let the public to, to provide feedback on this. And then there are a couple of small things we want to address before any motions or final adoption. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. System take over. Mr. System's saying that he might let Dave take over, no, we're letting, we're letting, Mr. System will start off, okay, he'll lead us off here.
You're the first, you're the background, please, yeah, that's your background, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Dave Doulter. I'm the project manager for the Ferrari Ranch project. The project started nine years ago. I have two new grandkids during that time. The nine years basically breaks down into these time periods. From 2008 to 2011, we did the planning and did a lot of the studies for the project. And it was a, a constant reiteration and iteration of where we thought it would be a good idea to put stuff in terms of a conceptual plan. From 2011 till about 2015, we did fine tuning on the plan, additional studies. And basically did the funding, secured the funding for the AME interchange Phase 1A that you see out there now. This was a team effort all the way. We were working with the county, of course, the city, MCAG. And we got the money, we went to Sacramento, we formed a very good transportation planning team on our own side. And I think it's not a contradiction to say it wouldn't sit, be sitting out there unless we were involved in the project. That said, we can't do our project without the interchange, so we're motivated to try to facilitate that. And it frankly was done in record time. And we certainly appreciate the county's help in doing that, Public Works specifically, and, and MCAG. The next period of time was roughly 2014 to 2017, the present day, where we did more fine tuning, additional studies. And then we did the processing and entitlements, including most of all, traffic studies. And of course, the environmental compliance, which is the DEIR, the EIR, and the final EIR, which you have and have seen before. So that's basically where we are today. We could not have done this without the cooperation of the county, LAFCO, MCAG, and the various city regimes that preceded you that are sitting here today. Item six that you approved was critical to the approval of the Ferrari Ranch, that's the tax sharing agreement. Without that, you don't have the benefits, the substantial financial benefits that you're going to see once the project is approved and final development plans come in for your review and approval. I would also say that none of the process to date cost the city anything. There is a reimbursement agreement in place and we paid all the bills. And we're up to date on the bills, I think. And in addition, we helped fund the housing element that you have approved as well. Because without that, you couldn't approve the project either. So there were a couple of keys that were done beforehand to get to this stage. Ed and I are here to answer any questions. We'll take as much time to do that as you wish. I think we can answer all the questions and are happy to do so. Then there's some net fiscal impacts to this thing. Basically, the project will cost the city nothing. When final development plans come in for specific developments that are within the concept that you see before you, they are going to have to do development agreements, they are going to have to provide financial analysis and impacts, they're going to have to do additional SEQA. The analogy that I would use on this is that the documents that are before you for action tonight are really like the key to a vacant house, a newly built house. There's nothing inside of that house. This is the key to open that door and it's empty. The final development plans that come in are really like the furnishings of that vacant house. You get to pick the color of the sofa, the design of the sofa, the decorations inside the house, the mirrors, the appliances, the ashtrays, whatever it is, you get a second shot in all that. And that will occur over a period of time because this is a very large project and it will involve many phases. So as Scott indicated, it isn't over by a long shot. But we believe, and I think we're conservative, that the fiscal benefits are in excess of $3 million at buildout. And the sooner we can get development plans in the door to you, the better off. the door to you, the better off we're gonna be, but I gotta get through this stage first. So again, we're happy to answer any questions you have, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, David.
So now, we're gonna have Ron Sisum with EMC Planning, he's gonna be talking about the project, and we're gonna walk through the various approvals as we've discussed before, and then when we're concluded, we'll have a chance for public comments or public hearing. I would advise, Mr. Sisum, that I've advised him that we're in Merced County, not Monterey County, so that we should not have that issue.
You can put a target on my back if I do that again, I will willingly take it, I will willingly bite the bullet on that. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Ron Sisum with EMC Planning Group, Scott mentioned we've been involved in this project, certainly not as long as Dave Doulter, but since Dave brought his applications to the city, and the city really accepted those applications and started to consider this project, we've been working with Scott to try to support him and Justin to move this through a process, and that's been about the middle of 2014, I believe, so we've been at it a while, and it's been a long road, as David said, it is a large project, it's, there's some, a number of pieces to it, so it's taken some time to really try to get it as right as we possibly can, and it's taken us this long to get there. What I'd like to do, and try to do this as briefly as I can, hopefully not going over too quickly, is run through the project description really briefly, what is this? And run through and summarize the actions that are in front of you tonight, talk a little bit about each one and what each one involves, okay? And certainly happy to answer questions as we go forward on that. So, these are some images of the project site, the pink line is the boundary, although I'll show another graphic that fills in a hole at the bottom right there, which is now part of the project site, you can see what the site looks like now, I think Station Manchester area, which is over a little bit to the left, is not on this photo, but here's basically where we are overall. We've got about a 360-acre site, there are nine approvals that are in front of you, as Scott said, most of them are resolutions, there are a couple that are ordinances, and those are the approvals David mentioned, that are the big picture, big ticket items that, as Dave said, are the keys to get in the door, we'll talk a little bit more about some that come after those. Basically, what this project does is annex new land to the city and allows a certain type and range of land uses, and what will happen on this site, or what is possible to happen on this site, are 82 new housing units, that's it, mostly in the west part of the project area, I'll show you those, almost two and a half million square feet of new building capacity, 267,000-square-foot hospital, and almost 400,000 square feet of medical offices. That's what is envisioned right now, if this thing were to be implemented the way it's envisioned in our applications or in the application before you. Compared to what the existing general plan says, this project brings forward slightly less new development capacity than what the general plan already envisions, about 250, a little more, or less dwelling units, and about 150,000 less square feet of building development. So at the end of the day, what the city had contemplated years ago in its general plan, this is slightly smaller than what was anticipated then, okay? Project also proposes a bunch of new infrastructure, especially roadways and utilities and water service and wells and water supply, a lot of that is embedded in the project materials you have in front of you, so there is a big package here that is being considered. Dave mentioned, and I'll go back to his last point on the slide, that this is a long-term endeavor. As a planning firm, we work on projects like this not infrequently, and these are long-term projects that take a while to build out, highly variable, depending on what the market is for the particular types of uses that are planned right now, you could have project developers come back and ask for something different than is contemplated now, separate process, but this is a long-term time horizon, we've assumed 20 years in the environmental documentation that we put together for it. Another map of the site down to the right there, just for context, project location. For purposes of planning and describing the project, we split the area into five different subareas, and that's the map in front of you right now, Subarea 1 is the Station Manchester area, out to the left, Station 2 is Canal Creek and Buick, and Subarea 3 is two pieces that are Ferrari Ranch, number 4 is a privately owned 6.3-acre parcel, we split that out because it's under separate ownership, and Subarea 5 is the existing valley neighborhood down in the south and east of the site, make some reference to that. This is a table in your materials that kind of splits out what is possible within each of these subareas in terms of types of development and development capacity. Okay, as I mentioned, there are nine things in front of you, all this stuff that we're talking about is embedded in this thing, that I'm sure you've read every word, you've read every word with excitement, it's all here, okay? All the nine approvals, the staff report, everything that you need to have to consider this project is embedded in here. The table of contents is a summary of all of it, it talks about the agenda report and the nine resolutions and ordinances, and all the supporting material that goes behind them, which is the evidence that you need to consider those actions. First one's certify the environmental impact report, second is general plan amendment, you see the others, pre-zoning, annexation, part of the sites in an agricultural preserve that needs to be taken away, there's a plan development master plan for Subarea 3 for the Ferrari Ranch piece, a vesting tentative map for Ferrari Ranch, a development agreement for Ferrari Ranch, and to sum it all up, some SEQA findings and statements of overriding consideration. I want to walk through each one of these briefly, again, I'll try not to take too much time. We wrote an EIR for this project, and EIR is required when a project is likely to or will have significant unavoidable impacts. You don't often get EIRs in the city, because most projects are smaller, they're handled in a different process called a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. The EIR process is longer, it's more costly, and the, it affords protection to the city legally that a negative declaration doesn't. The burden of evidence on somebody who wants to challenge an EIR is higher than it is for a negative declaration. All that said, we've been through several steps of completing this thing, they're all up here, the notice of preparation, this basically a notice that allows agencies, local and state, to comment on what they think ought to be considered in this environmental document, an administrative EIR, a draft, a draft EIR, a final EIR, and a mitigation monitoring program. All that stuff is in here, all it does is document what the likely impacts of this project are, how we can mitigate them and bring, and lessen those impacts, hopefully to less than significant, in cases where we can't, those are identified as well. There are a number of impacts related to this project that we can't make less than significant, no matter what we try to do to condition the project, or modify the project, or ask the applicants for future development to take certain actions. This is a list of those unavoidable impacts, I won't go through them all, probably the most problematic of them has been the traffic piece, because it's very complicated, we can talk about that if you like, but this is the litany of things that we could not get to less than significantly. The draft EIR goes out for public review for 45 days, it allows the universe, especially state agencies and the local public and local agencies, to comment on the content of this environmental document, did we get it right, did we miss something, does some agency have a special interest that wasn't represented, et cetera. We had five agencies comment on the draft EIR, and what we then do as part of the process is respond to all those comments that they provided and address all their comments, and try to provide resolution to them to the best of our ability, and that document is called the final EIR. I will mention that I mentioned the traffic has been a complicated piece of this, Caltrans in the county especially commented on the traffic analysis we did, and as a result of their comments, I think we went quite a bit of a step beyond to do some further analysis to try to address the things that they were concerned about, we did some additional technical work, and advanced some of the studies that often come after this process, we advanced those to the current time, so we could resolve those questions on the part of Caltrans in the county. Dave mentioned that this isn't the first bite of the apple for all of you from an environmental review perspective, every individual project that proposes something within this project site in the future will have some additional form of environmental review. This is the highest level, it's called a program EIR, every individual project will be looked at on its own merits, if it's consistent with what was assumed in this document, the process from the environmental side is, can be very streamlined, if it's not consistent, then we have to go into some expanded form of environmental review for those individual projects as well, so you'll see additional environmental review documents come through over time. The general plan amendment changes some of the land use designations that are in the general plan for this area, a large part of the change is taking a Subarea 3, which is Ferrari Ranch, from a commercial use to a business park use, there are some other minor changes, part of Subarea 2 goes to business park, and we have removed, or part of the general plan, it's not we, but part of the proposal is to remove some low density that was in Subarea 3 and Subarea 4, that gets converted, but I will note that the Station Manchester area and the valley area, which are existing residential areas, those land uses basically stay the same as they were in the general plan, no change to those. Here's some maps of how the changes work, I won't take too much time with those, those are hopefully to illustrate to you how these changes are proposed. We have to pre-zone each of these properties consistent with the new general plan designations that are proposed, so all these properties get assigned a zoning designation, okay, to be consistent with the land use, that's another action. Here's the map that shows what the zoning would be. Dave mentioned annexation, we can't do anything unless the city controls this land, so part of this process is the annexation application to LAFCO, we've got that application largely prepared, if the council decides to move forward with this project, a next step would be for the city to submit that to LAFCO, to initiate that process with them, they'd use our environmental document for their process, ultimately holding a public hearing to approve or deny the annexation request by the city. Map of the annexation map, the legal map that's part of the application, just to give you a sense. Subarea 3 Ferrari Ranch only is within what's called the county agricultural preserve, the county designates almost everywhere outside of incorporated cities or areas of urban concentration as agricultural preserve, it makes it easier for the landowners to enter into agricultural preserve contracts, like through the Williamson Act and other mechanisms, and they kind of do that to facilitate landowner participation in those programs. Part of the city's action is to take that out of, that area out of this agricultural preserve, which the city does have purview to do, okay, so that's one of the actions as well. Subarea 3 Ferrari Ranch, as Scott mentioned, and Scott and Dave mentioned, we do have a plan development master plan for that subarea only, it takes planning to the next level of detail, just for that subarea, talks about arrangements of land uses, landscaping, infrastructure, and other detail that we don't have for the other properties within this annexation area, because Dave Doulter and his client are advancing the development applications for that piece of this annexation area in particular. You'll see, as Scott mentioned, a bunch of final development plans come in to the city over time that relate to that subarea, there could be other individual projects that come in for the remainder of this annexation area that aren't part of Ferrari Ranch, those would be separate applications, and again, separate environmental review processes for those as well. Ferrari Ranch has a vesting tentative map, again, analogous to the preliminary development master plan in terms of advancing the entitlements for the Ferrari Ranch part of this annexation area itself, there's a quick vision of what that is, that's the first or main sheet, I suppose. And then the last approval, actually, second to the last, is a development agreement solely for Ferrari Ranch, this is basically a contract between the city and the applicant, it assigns responsibilities for who's responsible for what in moving development forward within that portion of this annexation area. And the last action is a set of actions relating to the environmental document, this is called the findings, the statement of overriding considerations, that's the acronym SOC, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, these are all part of a wrapped together the environmental documentation, and they are the evidence that the city uses to justify the decisions it's making on the environmental document, and why the city is willing to, or, yeah, is willing to approve this project despite some of its significant unavoidable impacts, and why the benefits of the project outweigh some of those impacts. The mitigation monitoring program is simply a tracking of what all the applicants have to do to implement development over time, and it's a recording tool and an accounting tool for the city to make sure that those things happen over time, it decides who, what needs to be done, who's responsible for it. Next steps, if you approve, are, actually, I left one piece out of here, and Scott mentioned the second reading of the two ordinances that are in front of you, that's part of the next steps. We've got an application that needs to go to LAFCO, and they go to hearing, and then, as Scott mentioned, if LAFCO approves, then the annexation goes up to the state for recordation. I know I kind of sped through this, but there's a lot of material, and you have a lot here, and I don't want to bore you too much with the process, but please ask questions about any of the detail, if you so desire.
Okay, thank you, Ron, take a breath. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, you know, this map that I'm showing here was, that's an earlier version, so yeah, there's a notation there to suggest that that area down there should actually be in that boundary, so.
So is there a straight line in Cross River Bridge Sands that goes to Buick Road?
No, that cutout is already annexed.
Alrighty, counsel, do you have any comments or questions at this point?
That's a lot of work now.
Hold on. We'll open the public hearing here in just a second.
Just one more slide, two more, a couple more.
Yeah, that is the boundary, so we can see that the piece down the right corner back is part of the draw.
If there's no questions from the counsel at this point? Mr. Reiman?
I just have a quick question, I just want to confirm that development agreement in here is the same one that was recommended to us by the CDRC, because ours has 40 pages and theirs had 35, and so I just want clarification on that before.
If you want, we can take a break, and I can get the package to see if there's something that's missing, and I think what wasn't in there were the exhibits, and we corrected to make sure we have the exhibits for tonight, I think.
That's correct, Scott, there were exhibits added to that development agreement after the CDRC, they were referenced in the version that went to the CDRC, but they weren't in the package itself.
Yes, yeah, and specifically, it's a map and description that were not in the package, but the content is the same, and I will advise before we take a motion that there's one recommended change to the development agreement that we can address later on, right before it comes back to us for discussion.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the counsel, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak to this particular item, please step to the podium, state your name for the record.
Jeanie Knight, 3218 North Buick Road, Atwater, California. I just want to know, if we want to sell our property after it gets annexed, and the sewer and water is down at Green Sands, does the city have any plans to bring that to our property line? Isn't that kind of how it works? Isn't that kind of how it works?
Yeah. Let's take ease collectively.
So Scott's going to write the comments down as you go. So, could you guys come up, ask those questions? If you have more, keep going with the questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Then they're going to address them.
I have another thing. This man right here told us the other day, it was, if he didn't build this in the city of Atwater, he was going to build it in the county. So it's not, it doesn't really have to be in the city limits. It can go in the county.
I know I'm being selfish because I'm thinking about myself. My business is in that subarea two. To come into the city limits would be, you know, you guys would put all kinds of restrictions on me. I have a propane business. I serve about a thousand people in this area. A lot of your residents live for me. That was my husband's dream. For me to go into the city of Atwater is not his dream, because I have bought this Ferrari Ranch for a lot longer than these guys have. Because I know Mr. Ferrari personally. He donated the property to get the freeway there. That's why the freeway's there. If you notice, it hasn't gone any further than Green Sands. Mission Express Park just got their money to go out to the college. It's going to be a long time before that. I don't, as far as Ferrari Ranch developing, doesn't bother me in the least. But just leave me alone. That's all I ask for. I stay awake at night worrying about this, and why should I? So somebody can make a big buck? I'm not bothering anybody. My trucks get it, I fenced the place, we're cleaning it up, got all brand-new trucks, the kids are handling business, I work the business. I'll be long gone before there's an ounce of dirt listed out there. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. And I think I have a good legitimate reason to be.
Thank you, Helen. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Does the city of Atwater get any tax money for being in the sphere of influence?
For being in the sphere of influence?
You know, this property, it's all in the sphere of influence of Atwater. Do you get any property taxes or anything now?
Not until we get an annexation. It's not us.
Do you get nada?
No, we're not under a sphere of influence. That's a wish list. Okay. Mr. Hernandez? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. Joe Foster, business at 4814 West Clover Avenue, right next to the Amaranth, where we've been there for 50 years. Actually, 1952 is when my father started, bought the property. City councils years ago came up with this idea that, you know, that you have to have a sphere of influence, and we came in your sphere of influence, and that eventually would be annexed. My problem is that we're presently zoned A1 and have been for probably those 50 years. And it's totally unfarmable land, so the A1 is obsolete, the zoning. And being the age that I am, I'm just about ready to retire. And so, every, all the advice that I get is that the land, my land, would be worth more if it was annexed into the city, and this BP zone applied to it, which is what the Atwater City Council years ago made in the general plan, the fact that it would be eventually BP. So I would just come out from the other side, is that I would encourage you to approve the project. It's been a long time coming. We're in this sphere of influence anyway. It's going to come eventually, whether we want it or not. If we vote against it, then you're going backwards. We're going to lose a lot of jobs, revenue, that will definitely help the city of Atwater, I would imagine. And at this present time, I have to operate a business under conditional use permit because it is A1 land. With BP zone, then I wouldn't have to pay the county a conditional use permit fee. So I would just encourage you to go ahead and approve all the steps of this application. Thank you.
Danny Hernandez, 1904 Canal in Atwater. I've been here in this business here with this Ferrari Ranch for as long as it's been going on. And with respect to these gentlemen here, you know, every couple of years, the city council will get somebody else to come up here and talk more about it and never do nothing. And the thing is, somebody just asked the question, what does the city of Atwater get in consideration of all of this? And at the end, somebody just asked a question about, you know, what, what do we get taxes out of this at the present time or not? We don't. I think what they need to start out at, since they want the city to approve, you know, the sewer, all of these things that have come up. Years ago, they came up with a hospital. A couple of years ago, they came up with a gas station and a whole bunch of little businesses. And now, you know, here we are again with another hospital. The whole thing is, the first thing they ought to start on is annexing the property to the city of Atwater. Plain and simple. That way, we know it's going to be ours, and we can move to do whatever we have to do here in the city, you know, to get this done. Otherwise, it's just going to continue to go on and on and on. You, the PD, the fire department, you know, the fire department got a ladder truck, you know, when Fawcett was mayor, because they says, oh, we need it for the new hospital. All of a sudden, that went down up in smoke. So all these plans that these gentlemen come up with, there's been nothing done. There's new road out there, that's true. There's people here with property out there, like, you just heard, you know, that, hey, they're in a pickle, you know, and they don't want it, they want it, you know. But in the meantime, they're coming up here and for the citizens of Atwater, you know, to continue to hear this, it's not productive at all. How in the hell can you make a decision, you know, when it's not clear, because nine years, like this gentleman said earlier, nothing's been done? Get the city, the county to annex the property to the city so that we can get it going the way it should be going. I don't understand how you can, how you can expect the city to continue to fund and approve and vote on this and so forth, and yet, there's no clear picture that we're even going to wind up with it. You think the county is going to let it go after it gets developed? I don't think so. To be quite honest with you, I don't trust Merced. They'll keep it, they'll make the money for the revenue on that, on taxes, and we're going to get left with a bill. And I, you know, for me, you know, hey, it's just one of these things, you know, hey, quit bringing it up. Be constructive. Get positive. Pass the annexation, ask for it, pass it, get the city limits out there, you know, and be done with it. And now you can talk business about how you're going to get it done and who's going to do it. That's all I got to say on it. You know, this thing is ridiculous. It's gone on too long, and I understand these projections, you know, 20 years down the road, but what the hell is this? In the meantime, you've got everybody here trying to figure out, okay, what do we have to pay? What do you have to do? What else, what are you going to ask for next? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Anyone else?
Most of us out there are in the Howard Jarvis Plan on our taxes, as you all know. And if we get annexed into the city, is any of that going to change? You know, we don't, they can't raise our property taxes very much. You know what I'm talking about?
Mayor Price, council members, city staff. My name's Breann Ramos. I'm the executive director of the Merced County Farm Bureau, representing 1,200 farmers, ranchers, and dairy families from throughout the county. As a leading agricultural organization, we find it necessary to come before you on the Ferrari project. At the public hearing for the Atwater Planning Commission, held on March 15th, it was stated that our organization supports the project. As we have previously made it clear during the Planning Commission meeting on April 5th, a representative from our organization has not stated our support for this project. Furthermore, after the initial statement was made and to present, we have had to mend relationships with our members, as many were upset do this incorrect action. My board of directors have requested a formal apology. Our foremost concerns have and always will be agriculture and the resources associated with it. Within our comments during the draft EIR, we raised an issue with a 33% increase of water usage that is projected to occur at buildout. This is on an already overdrafted sub-basin, and is considered to be significant and unavoidable. We understand the city of Atwater wants to encourage development and growth, yet we are concerned with the impacts that this will cause long-term. We feel that this needs to be looked at more in depth, as this is one of the most valuable resources in this county. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Joe Foster again, 4814 West Clover Avenue. One of the things I did want to bring up is, as far as the ag land goes there, 19, I would say in the 60s, Ferraris planted almonds there and ended up jerking all the almond trees out, because that land is not what we call prime land, to my knowledge. You know how Atwater sand is, a lot of it's blow sand. We tried to farm the acreage in front of our parcel, maybe for 10 or 15 years, and had trouble with watering, with irrigation problems. And it's really not the best ag land that we have available. There's some to the south, both south and north of us, that's a lot better. So if you're going to have a project, that's one good place to have a project, because it's definitely not great for farming.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Good evening, board. Joe Soto. I'm a farmer and also a Merced County Farm Bureau president. One of the main concerns that Breann brought up, and I think it disturbed me the most this evening, was SIGMA. SIGMA is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, 2014, signed into law by Governor Brown. What happens in 2020 here in Atwater? Anybody know? 2020. That's what hap, that's when we need to have our groundwater sustainability plan in place. So I mean, the council wasn't even aware of what the, what happens there. That surprises me. You guys, we got to take the lead in knowing what's going on with our basin. Atwater is over what basin? What's the basin underneath where you're pumping your water from? Anyone know? Merced Basin. How many basins in Merced County? Four. All this should be known by the council before any projects are going to happen or planned for the future. We have to show sustainability in the Merced Basin by 2040. So this is, according to your consent agenda, since January, your static pumping levels, your static water has dropped, and we've had a tremendously wet year. So this is of high importance to make sure that you're sustainable in your basin. Any future projects, you're going to pump water 33%? There's going to be significant and unavoidable impact, right? Agriculture with Merced County already has an ordinance in place where we can't drill wells. We can replace a well, but we have to make sure that our pumping is sustained. There's going to be a time when we can't pump. There's going to be certain amount of wells that we're going to have to idle. We're going to fallow ground. And this is all going to be, the cities are all going to have to take part in this. So everybody's going to have to show some conservance to save water here so we can bring our aquifers into balance. So just, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, that any future projects, such as a Ferrari project, is going to use water. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue this evening? Okay. Seeing none, closed to public hearing. Bring it back to the council. Scott, if you...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've taken some notes, and I think what I'd like to do is maybe respond in reverse, maybe take some of the last concerns or questions from the Farm Bureau and start there and work our way backwards, just because it's on the sheet of the document that I'm looking at right now in front of me. And also, I'm going to ask perhaps if Ron can participate or help me in this, and I know Brian is gone, Brian Shaw is gone, but I did want to acknowledge the fact that you're correct, there are going to be significant and unavoidable impacts. And that's the purpose of the EIR. It doesn't mean that we can't do it, it just means we have to disclose that, and that's what we're doing. And you understand that, obviously, because you've read it and you know the process. We would point out that we had to prepare what's called a water supply assessment. It's a detailed document specifically about the issues you talked about. That's a step above normal review that was required for the project, and it's integrated into the EIR, it's referenced in the EIR. Ron, is there anything else you want to help me out perhaps on that subject with regard to the water? Obviously, any other restrictions or issues the city has water-wise, those don't go away. That's still a separate issue that we have to address. We're here to talk about the development of this area and what's required for this area only tonight. The other issues are not to be tabled, those are still to be addressed. I don't want to lose sight of that. But any other thing that you can think of, Ron, in that area that I missed?
Well, yes, Scott, I think what Mr. Soto brought up about the SGMA is an important piece here. And this act basically is requiring water purveyors across the state to start taking responsibility or to be accountable for the state of their groundwater, if they are groundwater extractors. So obviously, the city is the water purveyor for everything in the city, and that would be the future water purveyor for any development in this annexation area, is going to need to participate, which was part of the discussion earlier, in the formation of a sustainable groundwater, or a groundwater management agency that starts this process of doing a long-term planning for how the basin gets into equilibrium. So the city will be part of that over time, and it is true, as Scott, you mentioned, that the EIR acknowledges that if development occurs here, we'll use more water than what's being used on this site right now. So that 33% increase is relative to what exists now, basically, against an existing As development moves forward and the SGMA process moves forward, there could be, as Mr. Soto mentioned, changes in how the city has to behave, changes in how every other water management agency that pulls water out of this groundwater basin has to behave over time. As individual projects come through and any action is being taken on how to manage this groundwater basin that is different than what it is today, then those projects will be subject to the regime in place at that time, including any opportunities or limitations that may be placed on Atwater's ability to pump groundwater. So, important point, but again, as we've talked about in the past, that as development occurs on this property, if conditions in the future are different than they are today, as we're assumed in this document, then those conditions are going to have to be considered at that time for those individual projects, including the availability of groundwater as it may be influenced by this Groundwater Management Act and Sustainable Management of the basin. So that's kind of the big picture there. I don't know, Scott, if that's kind of getting to where you want.
No, I think you hit it. I think you hit it, is that there will be other review needed, and the policies that are incorporated from the Groundwater Management Act will have to be reinforced down to the project development level piece of this, and there's no getting around that. And whoever we're working with in the future on those, and we can have Dave come up if you'd like to speak, they'll have to look at, you know, water-efficient landscaping, all the things that are required that anyone else would be doing. So, those won't go away. Dave, did you have something that you wanted to add?
My remarks at CDRC were intemperate, if you will, and I do apologize formally to the Farm Bureau for that. The fact remains, the two facts that remain, and they are not in controversy, are these. First of all, I never claimed, nor none of my team claimed, that we had Farm Bureau endorsement. I don't know where that rumor got started, I don't know how it got to the Farm Bureau, but we never did that. But again, my remarks before the CRDC were intemperate, and I apologize for them. The requirement in the EIR has been fulfilled, and that is one-to-one mitigation for the agricultural land that we are taking out of the preserve. The land that we are dedicating in perpetuity for agricultural preserve is bigger and better than what currently exists at the Ferrari Ranch. Despite what the state says in terms of designations for ag land of various classifications, it is not good ag land, despite what those maps say. And again, we did mitigate, we overmitigated, over one-to-one ratio, which we're required to do, and that land is better, it's in Merced County, and we have letters to prove that, which I think you have access to. If you don't, I can provide that. Thank you.
And so, on that topic, Dave pointed out a very important thing, is that there was a comment in the EIR from the LAFCO, basically requesting that we ensure that we're following the policies they have for mitigation. That's been accomplished, basically, by securing rights that that new land will be in a preserve, that will be there for farming in the future. So, we feel that that's been accomplished through the mechanisms we have in the EIR. Dave also mentioned that the area is of larger scale, better purpose than what we have now. You know, unfortunately, the Farm Bureau has a very specific policy, I understand that, I appreciate that policy. We believe we've done what's required under the circumstances that we have to work within to make mitigation for that. And so, I wanted to address those going backwards. So, the next one I want to move on to is some of the comments that were provided by Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, really, the reason we're doing all this with this giant document here is because the LAFCO, the agency that reviews the annexation portion of this, requires this level of detail. Long gone are the days of we had a map, we want to bring in 70 acres or 50 acres, and just let us take care of it, we're good to go. They will not do that. They rely on this environmental document for their action. It basically is a foundation for what they approve as well. They want to make sure that all these mitigation issues and all these environmental issues are addressed, and so that's forced upon them by the law. It's called comprehensive planning. It's just how we have to work the system now. It would be great if we could just annex it and deal with it. Well, we are. We're done with it tonight. We're talking about the annexation as one of the approvals amongst all of the other pieces of what we want to get accomplished here. But unfortunately, the way that the code is set up, and that's our internal code, maybe it's a good thing, you could argue it's not, I think it is, that later on, still projects have to come back for subsequent approvals, and that gives the council and the community time to weigh in on that, just like the issue of water. We have another time when things come up to review what's going on. We don't snap our fingers, it's all done at one time, that's not the world we live in. There are other approvals that will be required. That's how it is. It's comprehensive planning, and that's how it is. The state has mandated that, LAFCO reinforces that, the county looks at it, that's what we're doing. We have a question from Mr. Foster.
We've already closed the public hearing, Mr. Hernandez, I'm sorry.
Mr. Foster talked about Ed Schaefer. Did you have a question or a comment or supplement, my help here?
Ed Schaefer with the Archon Norris Law Firm, representing Ferrari Ranch, and to help Mr. Hernandez understand. He expressed concern that development might occur, and then someone might prevent annexation, and you wouldn't get the tax benefits. And just to clarify for Mr. Hernandez and the audience, this action tonight includes applying for annexation. Annexation must be approved and occur before any development occurs out there. So, Mr. Hernandez, the land will go into the city before a single stick is planted, and only then will the city go forward with approving development as it chooses, and occurring, the development occurring, and then jobs and taxes going to the city. So, it will all be after annexation.
Thank you, Ed. The third comments or questions I want to address from Mr. Foster, Joe and Cam Foster here tonight, and they're accurate. They have approvals to operate a business today within the county, and that won't change when we annex it. That also helps address Mrs. Amaran's concerns. The business she has will be able to be operated in the future. We will, at some point, once the annexation is approved, get copies of the documents the county has had on file for approvals. Use permits often are incorporated and recorded against the land, so they stay on title, you can see those, but those activities don't change. And so, it's kind of the, I think you probably heard the term grandfather, that's exactly what it is. When do things change? Well, you know, once they are annexed in, and when there are significant changes, then we have to look at those. But if you're going to keep doing what you're doing, and we're not changing the scope, those don't matter. I know in the case of the Fosters, you know, they're actively looking to have the land sold, and there's actually people calling and talking to us about development there. So, most likely, what's been going on there now won't be what's going to happen there in the future. That's the progress of this, that's the benefit of this. They now have new uses they could do under the city that they could no longer do under the county. It adds more flexibility, more intensive uses than they had previously. So, I hope that explains some of that. Mrs. Amaran, you talked about a couple of things here. One of them was about the project in Merced for the University Expressway, and about Green Sands being the limit right now for the Atwater-Merced Expressway. You're correct. However, you also know that we've planned out future phases of the Atwater-Merced Expressway, and we had to break it into pieces because that's the money we had to work with. I could tell you that coming up for the MCAG Governing Board is a proposal for advancing what's called the Project Study Report. That's the phase to study the design and preliminary environmental issues, to extend the expressway from Green Sands to Santa Fe, that's the next piece. And so, there's a proposal going before the MCAG Board for their consideration. And again, that project is separate, and it has to do its own review, and has to go through its own process. I think, well, some of the other questions I wrote down here, there were questions about...
Why can't I do it? I don't, I can't breathe in. I don't care.
The reason why the annexation is the shape that it is, is that they require to have comprehensive plans that don't create peninsulas or islands. When we originally looked at this project, we didn't intend to include valley. However, LAFCO felt that it was leaving a community out that would be orphaned or isolated for public services from the county, and so, it's included. The property that you own...
People realize that if their water, I own that, I have my own sewer.
Those residents get water from Meadowbrook Water Company.
A neighborhood.
Yes.
Remember, I extended Atwater years ago, I have a need to have a rez, I have an Atwater.
You're in the Atwater zip code, not in the city limits. Yes, not in the city.
And is Mr. Ferrari going to buy out Valley's area?
You're going to keep owning your property like you do today. The question was...
So, the people in the middle of that field, are they going to eat their little house property, or are they going to have to move it?
Mayor, we did close the comments, but I'd like to help the gentleman, I think.
I understand.
The property as is today is going to, how it's going to stay unless someone has a plan for down the road to change it under the entitlement process.
Okay, in the middle of their property where they supposedly own is a house. Are they going to leave that while he's there?
The house will stay until someone develops it and does something else with it. And if they decide they want to tear it down for whatever reason, they're entitled to do that, it's their property, there's a process to do that as well.
Okay, at the end of that, green sand and GUR, there is a little tree area that there was foxes living in. They could not develop around there because they wanted to move that grow around. They did not develop there because of that fox. Is Mr. Ferrari going to leave that for the fox, for that environment?
Ron, could you help us out in talking about the mitigation that was done for species and wildlife?
Yes. As part of this process, the EIR reports on the possible biological resource effects of a project like this. So, all this property's been surveyed, for the most part, all of it's been surveyed to understand what plants are there, what habitats are there, what wildlife is there, and what wildlife and plants could potentially be there. That area that the gentleman is referring to up on Green Sands and GUR has called out in the EIR specifically as a potential habitat area. So, it requires some further surveys that couldn't be done at the time we did it, because they were out of season when certain things bloom. There's also mitigation in the EIR that suggests that if that is determined to be wetland, then there is mitigation that's required to compensate for the loss of that wetland somewhere else. So, presumably, that wetland could stay in place, it's doubtful that it would, it wouldn't make sense for it to, given the level of development that is planned here, but there is mitigation in the EIR to address issues related to animals and plants that could be displaced or lost as a result of this development.
Okay. Some of the other questions that were asked during the comments, does the city get tax, property taxes from the SOI? And the answer is no, we don't. If there's a county development in the sphere of influence, it doesn't provide a tax benefit to the city, and vice versa. So, I hope that's clear. The question was, my taxes basically are at a rate now, will that change? The answer is no, your taxes don't change. That's set by law, it doesn't change. Earlier tonight, you may have realized, you may have noticed that we had an item on talking about the reallocation of property tax. We didn't increase anyone's taxes. The county and the city now have agreed that we're going to split it differently going forward, and it's actually to our benefit to do that. So, I hope that helps understand that piece of it. The question also came up, can the project happen in the county? On a practical level, the answer is no, it can't. And there's a few reasons for that, Dave, I don't want to bust your bubble here, but first of all, we would object to it. We would say this is area in our sphere of influence, and it's planned for our purposes, and so there would be some wrangling over that, potential legal issues, those types of things. But by and large, the other issue is that we could provide public services that support and promote this type of intensity of development that you wouldn't normally find in the county. Now, there are county places that have development, we all understand that, but they also have usually infrastructure districts that are formed to support those. And again, we would not support that in this area if it's in our SOI. Meadowbrook has its own area, provides water separately, that's an example. You also have that on the west side for different areas around the I-5, that's a separate utility district. Those developments don't happen without some type of backbone infrastructure, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Something else here about, does the city have plans to extend, I think I already addressed that through the PS, oh, does the city have plans to extend utilities to my property? And this has been a question you've asked over and over, and I've been providing information to the council, I want to make sure that we're very clear on this. We can't force you to extend utilities to your property. Once there are utilities adjacent to it, and there's a need that arises, your septic tank fails, your water, your well fails, we can work to make accommodations at that point. Until then, until something's close by, if you have to do new well or new tank, there's a process to do that. We would like to have comprehensive utilities, and eventually, what probably will happen is someone nearby you is going to want to develop, and they're going to extend them. At that point, there's a mechanism we can set up to allow that to work, but keep in mind, there's no free connection here, there's a cost. There's a cost to connect, and you might be hit with an assessment to help defray the cost for it. But if you sell the property as is, whoever's going to buy it, they're responsible to keep it the way they want. And if they want to bring utilities on, we work with them. It's not a responsibility, it's a work-with-them type of an issue. So, I hope that helps.
... Sewer and sidewalks and everything out there, that needs to be made really clear. People are worried they have all the...
Thank you, Mrs. Amaran. I've been very clear every time we have a chance to talk in the public about this. Have a laura.
Last time we had a meeting, I had a gentleman who said, "We need to get it developed." She had a kid, she had no idea. And they kind of, another gentleman, he lives on Ashley, he's quite like it, he's not part of the community, he doesn't understand. And you can say it's a bunch of them, they deserve to be honest with you. And it's not, it's like, if these children are having a bad time, from a hospital, a retailer, a restaurant, I would say, let's sign up, I'll go first, I would want Atwater to be sweet, well, twenty, sweet, and I grew up here, I went to Atwater High School. But you don't really want to do anything. So, you're getting everybody upset, you're going to throw guns up, you're going to go forever. It's just not love of it. It just brings it, I don't understand your guys' reason at all.
I appreciate the feedback. We can't plan ahead till we have the annexation and all of this worked on. Now, we can start to work forward on bringing things in. Until we have these pieces in place, we're stuck. This goes back to Mr. Hernandez's point. I know he's shaking his head, he doesn't agree, but I'm going to tell you, you have to do comprehensive planning, we have to do these steps to get forward. Something could happen a lot quicker, and we hope that's the case, something could take longer. It's market-driven. Unless you're going to go out and buy the land and develop it, who knows what's going to happen? We have a template for it here. We've assessed, we've assessed...
Please, listen.
I'm kind of fair to speak, and you cut us off all the time, it's the most rude and disrespectful thing ever.
I apologize.
I have one comment, and I'll shut up, okay? I take from Turlock, who is like a growing, thriving community, and so, if we're going to become the Atwater, it would be great if some of the people who are talking about positive things, like we wrote that, the Laro Gasoline's coming in, we're getting some cubicle jazz, barroom, you know, you hear anything positive, always negative stuff. So, it'd be great if they made, they were coming to us and saying, "Hey, guys, we have a commitment, we're going to buy three brick restaurants," but we haven't ever did that. So, yeah, it doesn't affect our mom's business, it affects me, because just as we said a little while ago, you watched the girl, I watched my father, and this company, we don't want to be in that environment. And I'm like, right now, we don't have an asset, we don't want it to be governed by anybody else, we're already governed by the federal government, governed by the state government. Now, we're going to be hard now, when you know what's going to happen, it's a limited situation, I'm going to sign you up, but you're not going to do anything, because your team's done, probably, people are attacked, so how is that really going for us? These gentlemen here, they're up now, they're supposed to their stuff, and they're gone, they don't contribute to community, they don't live in this community, and fight for it, they don't come out. And when they get this passed, they'll be bye-bye. This one's going on a rate, that's where you really want to be, and not just when they're living.
Mayor, I can just be very clear that, I want to, I hope everyone understands, the taxes that are there today that are derived from property taxes, those stay to the county, we don't get those. It's only as new things happen that we get a share of the new investment. So, the county will continue to get those, but here's the thing, we'll be servicing your property with police and fire, the county won't...
Right on, but we have a duty, all of it is a question for the state of the county.
And again, I'm trying to be very clear here, the operation of what you do in the business is going to stay there, you can still run the business. So, I appreciate that you guys have a lot of concern, but I'm trying to be as clear and supportive as I can, I just want to make sure that you understand that.
But I think our biggest concern is, if we can sell our property, because they're twenty years down the road, and we can't, we can't talk to them.
I think you need to talk to Mr. Foster and Cam. They're in the process of doing that, people are looking to buy it.
I think they need to know what they're talking about.
We'll have to address that when it's time, it depends on what they're going to do.
We have a lot of relatives of Robbie Wallace, residents on Valley and Ashley, that are saying that Mr. Ferrari is buying all that out. There is no letter, there's nothing been sent to us residents on there, but just this one, you come to this meeting about the annexation. Mr. Ferrari needs to give us the community residents in that area, and let them know what your plan is, or what your guys' plan is on. Nobody knows, they think everything's going to be bought out. I know a lot of residents who were there, are waiting for Mr. Ferrari, and then to buy the rest of that land, from GUR to Buick, and behind. The area that's across the street is already telling people that they're selling up to build a diesel truck, truck stop, right there behind GUR's thing.
Yeah, that property's not part of the annexation, not part of this project. If they've got a different plan, they haven't talked to us about it. If they've got a different plan, they haven't talked to us about it. In terms of buying anyone out, that's not the plan at this point. I'm sorry that you think that that's...
There are more than just us.
I just want to point out too, that I appreciate that you're here, participating tonight. That's the point of having these. And we've done everything in compliance with the law to make sure you have proper notification of what we're doing. We've done everything consistent with the law to do this. And I appreciate people asking questions, because that way, you get information. Now, you can talk to people and help hopefully set them straight. We're not trying to provide misinformation. That's not what we're here for. We're here to tell you accurate, factual information.
Any other questions?
I had a question.
Paul?
Regarding your guys' question, what I'm hearing is, they're asking Scott, if this goes forward, are they going to be protected and left alone? Are their businesses, what they do now, what is, what will change because of this process? I'm hearing from you that nothing's going to change on their upper. As long as you guys continue doing what you're doing, you want to be left alone. We're going to provide police and fire services over there, but they're going to be left alone. So, can you articulate that back to them a little cleaner?
I think that, I think that the council member just did it.
Helen, please, let us answer your questions.
I mean, Paul, I think you just did it. I think by asking the question, you just phrased it as clearly as can be done. When would we get involved? We would only get involved if you needed a permit for something new. I hate to say it, but if someone were to complain about an issue, we'd have to be involved from code enforcement. But we would take a very practical approach to it. That's how we always have been. Oh, okay.
I will speak to you.
Helen, we've closed the public hearing. We understand your concerns. We're trying to address them.
Okay, I just want to tell you this, so that everyone hears.
One last time, please.
It will be cleaned up by this summer. Those tanks will be removed. But you have to understand, the tanks are our business. That is how we make our money. I know people think it's junk, but it's not junk. I've heard from a prominent citizen in your area that my place is a piece of junk. Well, I don't appreciate that. You know, the city of Batwater doesn't even buy fuel from me. I've lived here my whole life. We've done, we, everybody writes me letters for donations and everything. They don't even have the courtesy to even give me an opportunity to bid on it. And I bet I could cut your fuel price in half. And that's all I will say. But I just want you to remember, you have said that I can operate like I am. Also, just like the eighty-foot fence I was going to get that never got built. Okay? I won't say.
And again, the uses that you have remain in effect. But again, we still get involved because we have certain rights and certain authorities we have to work within. But really, we're only involved if something needs a permit. Weed abatement could be an issue. I'm just being honest. But that's things that we provide service-wise to everyone.
On those, that question, no different than what the county would do. Same type of level, right? So, that's what they're saying. Everything gets to stay the same.
Okay. Mr. Raymond?
To put some of their fears at ease, can we put this in writing? They'll be left alone, you know? They continue doing business as usual as a protection or safeguard for them?
Yeah, that's probably what we would do.
Okay.
I think that'd be important to do that. We want your peace of mind, and it's a lot of stress.
I too, I want to, you know, let Mr. Hernandez know, I too am extremely flustered with the way it takes forever to get something done. But again, as we've stated tonight, what we're here and what this is all about now is to move forward with that annexation process, so that we can move this thing forward and do what we're going to do with it. County isn't going to get the money from this. They're not going to derive anything out of this thing. And with our, as was stated earlier, the revenue sharing agreement now being taken to a new level and now voted on, all these things are positives that are going to help the city. So, I want to make that clear. And for Helen and Jeannie and everyone here, you know, I recall at the CDRC meeting, the comment was made, or the question was, "What's in it for me?" Well, as I also, I think I told you then, and I'll tell you again, and everyone else that may be in a particular situation similar to that within this area, police and fire is a big deal. Your fire, well, you can laugh, Jeannie, all you want, but here's the thing, the fire department sits from Helen's property probably about two minutes away. If you have some sort of an incident over there right now, and the county goes over there, how long will you be before you see the fire department there coming out of a county station? It'll be a lot longer. Your response times are a lot longer, and I don't think you want that. Same thing for the police. I know that for a fact, because I've written with the police department here, that when you have only six officers, sheriff's officers, protecting from Sanonella all the way out to Snelling and La Grande, all the way out to Delhi, when you have six officers that are protecting that area right there, and you call for a service out there in the county area, are you satisfied with that? Or would you rather have the chance to have somebody responding from the city of Batwater that can be there in possibly two to three minutes, rather than two to, a longer time? One night, when I was riding with the police department, we had to go out on Highway 140 and cover a call out there for the county. When we got out there, the responding officers to that particular call from the sheriff's department were coming from Dos Palos. Is that the kind of response that you want? I don't think you do. I, well...
I just...
Okay. Okay. Well, I don't know why you would be the exception, but nonetheless, those are the issues that are on right now, and I think Chief Joseph can attest to the fact, that there are many a time that our police department here, even as short-staffed as we are, we respond in lieu of the county.
And they also respond in lieu of you.
Well, that, well, okay.
I consider on law.
Okay. Ms. Veer?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to say that I do, I do agree with some of the statements made tonight, that I believe that a large amount of our citizens think that Ferrari Ranch is being built, and that there's already commitment of businesses to come. My son asked me on Saturday, "Mom, when's the hospital coming?" And so, I know, before I sat on the city council, I was a lot more ignorant to what's going on than I am today, and I truly believe that the citizens believe that. So, I just want to make it clear, moving forward, that the way the dirt sits right now, from my understanding, is the way the dirt will sit when it's done. There's no sidewalks, there's no roads, there's no water being taken out there, there's no electricity, there's no buildings, there's nothing. They're just putting the map, that's it. We all have our thought of what it could look like in our minds, because we've been provided pictures. The pictures that I looked at, and then when we look at the plans, they don't coincide. In the pictures, you don't have five, you know, five-foot sidewalks, and I know that they're set back. And I know that a lot of this document that I got on Thursday is completely above my head. I feel like a third grader reading this. So, we're being asked to approve something that I'm going to honestly tell you, I do not a hundred percent understand. It's frustrating coming here and seeing that, for the good of making money, we're going to change people's lives. So, I love the idea of being able to grandfather in our people that own property there to know that you can continue to run your business with some certainty that we're not going to, we're not going to come and change it. Going through this, and I'm sorry, I'm going to start to chatter, but it is freezing cold up here, so, a couple of things I looked at, and on one of the documents that will be recording, a development agreement between the city of Batwater and the Ferrari Ranch owners. Normally, in this, there's a real person or something, and this is a recordable document. Who are the Ferrari Ranch owners? Who is responsible for the ownership of this? It just says Ferrari Ranch owner. So, if there's ever a mitigation in the future, who say that I had a problem, and I need to find Ferrari Ranch owners? Who is that person?
Do you want to answer that now?
Anybody, yeah.
The Ferrari family owns the two parcels that make up SubArea 3. There are a lot of trusts, family trusts, you're probably familiar with that from your business and the mortgage business. There's a whole series of those, and John Ferrari, the principal in all of this stuff, has through the years gifted part of those, a sixteenth, an eighth, a thirty-second, to various family members. The family is fairly large, and so, that's why the ownership is lengthy when that sheet comes across for the signature sheet for the development agreement. To make it easier to sign that thing, rather than get all the family members who own little bits and pieces of that through their trust, their family trusts, a lot of people have those, I, you know, you're familiar with that. In order to not have a whole list of signatories, they're doing a power of attorney, so John can sign on their behalf. And the family all knows that, but there's only two parcels. It's out of the whole, there's two projects, basically. There's the annexation area project that we're talking about, then there's the Ferrari Ranch Plan Development, Master Plan Project. The Ferrari Ranch ownership is in two parcels, and it's about 159.5 acres total. Again, that's the ownership situation. And there are no plans or any desire for the Ferrari Ranch ownership to buy any of the valley properties at all. We have no interest. That's a rumor. I want to put that to rest. Kill it, drive a stake through its heart. We're not doing that.
Okay, and then another question that I had made notes of. I know that, once it's approved, there, I'm going off numbers here, once it's approved, then individuals can come in and purchase and do their own development. So, if we have a shoe store here next to a marijuana grow here, and the shoe store can't get in touch, or they can't come together on what this, what they're supposed to look like, who mediates that? Because now, we're going to deal with 257 different developers, or 100 different developers. Who's responsible for mediating any negotiations between them? And in the, in the large project, where, so, say, okay, I love your project, and I want to go, and I want to put a 1,200-foot, square foot warehouse in the middle, and I'm, we're going to, whatever, we're going to produce. Where, when does water and sewer and all of that come into play for me? And who's responsible now for bringing that water and that sewer and all of that to my warehouse in the middle of your project?
The project, because of its size and its sort of two distinct uses, a medical use on one side of the Batwater-Merced Expressway, and then the commercial stuff on the other side, it really dictates that the ultimate developer is a master developer. And with that will come CCNRs, commercial retail CCNRs, office CCNRs on the other side where the medical center. And I don't know that it necessarily is a hospital. It could be surgical centers of various sorts. It could be laboratories. It could be lots of different things when they come in with final development plans. But the point of it is, it's so large, it probably dictates that a master developer will purchase portions of the property, significantly sized portions of the property, from the family, and they will develop that. So, the developer, that developer, that master developer, will be in charge of controlling the uses that are in there. And he has to come in here to get final development plan approval. So, you get a, there's not going to be a pot grower next to a shoe store. They're just not going to do that, because it's not, it's not within the realm of their marketing scheme, I wouldn't think.
So, the big picture is, when you're finished, you're really going to present a product to another developer, who's a master developer, who would then come in and develop it as a whole? Is that kind of what we're hoping for?
That's what I'm hoping for, yes. The project is for sale. The Ferrari family are not developers. There was one point in time where they thought about doing the corner at Green Sands in Buick, where there's a strip center, and there's a corner that sort of lends itself for a service station and fast food and all that kind of stuff that you normally would see. But I, they have abandoned that. They'd rather just, I think the family has decided, they'd just rather sell it to a master developer, or several different master developers, because it is a large piece. So, that's probably how it's going to be developed. So, what you'll see in a final development plan, and we did four development scenarios just to get our arms around costs and apportioning of costs for sewer, water, storm drain, and traffic. They'll come in with, and I would think that the first one in, the easiest one to do is a hotel, or maybe two hotels, because that doesn't need anything else. It could operate by itself. And as the mayor knows, there's a great need for hotels in the community. So, that guy with the hotel is going to walk in here with a final development plan, and he's going to have to do all the EIR stuff, and all the updates, and all the mitigations that go with that. And he's going to have to show you height, parking, landscaping, lighting, traffic, all that other stuff, and you're going to get a chance to approve that. And it will be, it will either conform more or less to what is being talked about tonight, or if it's substantially different, you're going to have to amend what it is you're doing tonight. And it may even, it may even involve a new development agreement, or an amendment to the existing development agreement. The development agreement that, when it's recorded, will run with the land. So, whoever it is, it'll say Ferrari, but whoever the master developer is, or are, if there's several of them, inherit that document, and they're stuck with it unless they want to change it, and you agree to it. So, that's really how it's going to work. Now, on the utilities, what will happen is that, in most cases, and even in the four development scenarios that we showed you in terms of the cost, it's, it costs between 10 and 11 million, 10 to 12 million dollars to do any one of those scenarios. Now, it could be different if somebody wants to bring in, it could be more or less than that. But one of the things we have to do right away, if that's what I build, and that's all that I propose on the final development plan, what I have to do is do about three or four million dollars worth of water infrastructure. I cannot go ahead, because you guys have told me, the city, not you personally, have said that we need a new well, and we need a pump, and we need some storage. I got to do that. I got to do that before I build anything. I am not the only beneficiary of that water system. So, at some point in time, I got to put it in, because I got to do it right away to serve whatever it is, even if it's a small thing. We're going to get reimbursed for, from other parties as they develop their benefit pro rata share of that water system. That will apply for traffic, that will apply for storm sewer, that will apply for sanitary sewer. And those are, those mechanisms are usually called land-based financing. And so, it's some kind of an area of benefit, a CFD, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. But the point is, when that, when he, when they come in with a final development plan, they got to tell you all that stuff in really great detail. We can't do that at this level, because we don't know what's going to go first in terms of final development plans, or even the nature of those formal development plans. All we can give you is some idea of the kind of uses, the magnitude of those uses, and what the impacts of that house, that vacant house, which is what this is at this point, what the magnitude of the impacts are, and what kinds of mitigations can be offered. That's about the best way I can explain it at this point. It'll get very specific in terms of what the market dictates that the master developer wants to put in here. We hope and like the plan, this conceptual plan that we have, but it could be different. And I would expect it to be over the several years. I, we, for purposes of the EIR, we say 20 years, but we had a, we had a lock on some number. Based on the economy, it could be sooner, much sooner than that, when somebody walks in the door. But I can't do anything until I open the door. This is opening the door.
Mr. McBride?
No, thank you, Dave. Dave hit some of the highlights that I wanted to mention. You know, in most commercial shopping areas, you have CCNRs, and you have common area, you have, those all have to be developed. That's not where we are now. That's still at a later phase. And think about some of the other things we'll have to do. I mean, there's going to have to be, like Dave talked about, you... I mean, there's going to have to be, like Dave talked about, you have to design the infrastructure to serve, the pieces you're going to develop, and then we have to form districts, maintenance districts, for landscaping and for everything. So I mean, again, this is to get the big picture done. This is not all the details of everything that's going to happen. And that's why I want to just reiterate that this is something we will be dealing with over many years to facilitate the development of this.
Well, and I understand where we're at, and I feel much better if we're able to offer the current property owners some kind of reassurance. That takes a lot of weight off of me, because if that were my property, I'd be upset, too. And these are people that have been in Atwater for a long time, and that is important. I wanted to say a couple of other things, because I do want to get this off my chest. I think that if we were more whole financially, this would be a better idea. We still have, if you drive through the city of Atwater, a lot of unused commercial space. And I don't know that in the very near future we're going to see anything developed out there. I think it might be closer to 20 years. It doesn't make it a bad thing, it's just something that I think we're all upset or hustle about right now. I don't see this happening for a very long time. For today, it's affecting your life, so I'm hoping that in the near future we can get something in writing to these homeowners. That makes me feel so much better about the decisions you're making. We still have a lot of development. I know we have some over there on Juniper, nothing's happened there. I don't think we're starving for development, but to go ahead and move it forward so that at some point it can be developed, it's ready. I just kind of wanted to throw my thoughts out there, how I felt about the project, and glad, Paul, I'm going to give you credit for that, coming up with it, because, you know, it is a small community, and these are people that we have to see them in the grocery store. And I'm a little bit afraid of Mrs. Amrat sometimes, because I am a little afraid of her.
Enter side Kim Jeanie.
I know.
Okay. Scott.
I think we've got most of the questions out and addressed. There was one change that we had talked about earlier today with Mr. Schaefer and Tom and Rosie, and that is on page four of the development agreement. It has to do with the timing. Obviously, we had a lot of moving pieces on this, and we weren't sure timewise how things were going to work out. And so what we would be requesting is, instead of the date here of the operative date being before December 31st, 2017, we want to change it to one year from the approval date of this agreement. That just gives a little bit more ample time. We thought when we developed this that was plenty of time down in the future, but the date's actually fairly close considering the next pieces that have to happen with annexation and everything else. And I would just add that when I'm in the store, Mrs. Amrat, it's really nice for me and my family and... Yeah, so...
All right, Mayor, I make a motion to approve with the caveat that we provide a statement letter to the business owners that can continue their current operation. Please?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Just for clarification, and also with the change related to the date of the DA for the one year?
Yes, and also with that change included.
Mr. Raymond.
Just real quick, Mr. City Manager, on summary, page four, says, "Infrastructure and public facilities, construction and maintenance could be financed through public facilities. Financing mechanism required by the city." I mean, that sounds like a Melrose-type deal. Is that where we're headed there?
It could very well be. It's a tool. It is a tool.
We discussed several options, and I don't know if you were there or not, but at MCAG, when the Ferrari folks came there, and there was one financing option, and I raised that very question about, it sounded like Melrose to me as well. So there's several different things. We're kind of light years away from that right at the moment, but when that comes around there, yes, that's considered.
No, I... Thank you, thank you, Councilman Ray. I think the point is, is that we want to make sure that we are flexible enough to allow for what might need to happen, but ultimately, we're not bound. We have to make decisions when it's time to make the decisions. And so it just gives a template or enough of an approach that nothing's ruled out.
So what Councilman Raymond's saying is that when they bring one of the master developers come in, and they do propose that, and the council's not okay with that, that will get shot down. Otherwise, if they do like, if the council likes it, that'll go forward. But that's another potential mechanism that this council's not interested in, that I can see right here.
Now, with, I mean, everybody's pretty cognizant of the headaches that we've had with Melrose over the past, so, you know, when it comes time for that, we'll go ahead and make an issue of it, but at this point, we're not there yet, so... David, did you have something to say?
Just... The city attorney was exceedingly careful about the language that you mentioned, that it doesn't force the city into making a decision just because we ask for it. I can't contemplate a developer coming in, a master developer, asking for a Melrose at this point. There are other, better land-based financing methods than that. That is fraught with all kinds of... The Melrose is fraught with all kinds of difficulties. It is a tool, it probably will be considered, I just don't see it. And again, the language is the way it is because it allows the city the maximum flexibility in saying yes or no to the various kinds of financing mechanisms that are proposed, and it could be shot down by the city. So it's really, you've got the control, not the developer.
So, Mayor, I think we have a motion. Yep, we do. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussions? Hearing none, call for the question.
Raymond.
So confirming that the current business owners will be able to operate, will have an agreement in writing confirming that.
That is part of the motion.
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Fair Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, hi. Okay, so, 17, we're at City Council Comments, rounding the corner and heading down the stretch. Mr. Raymond.
Last week, Councilman Creighton and I went to One Voice to Washington, D.C., and while we were there, we were able to meet with the Department of Justice and discuss with the marijuana issue a little bit. Not much came from it, but we did speak with them about COPS grants, and we were given some information that'll help make us competitive. We went to the Department of Veteran Affairs to speak regarding homeless veterans and helping house them, and also with FEMA to focus on grants for fire, to just try to bring some money into the city. It was a great trip. We spoke with, as Supervisor McDaniel said, Bill Schuster, Congressman in charge of the Transportation Committee, and we were able to have some good conversation there about getting some monies for roads. So that's it.
Ms. Vier.
I have no comments.
Mr. Vineyard.
National Prayer Day was last Thursday here, and I want to thank, and there was 13 speakers. It was a pretty potent day. I've never been to one of those, and we had two really great singers, and I just want to say thank you publicly for that. Also, Crestview Estates and Herman Neighborhood Watch are going to have a gathering at Heller Park on May 18th, starting at 6:00 to 7:30. Anyone that wishes to come is fine, would be more than welcome, there's food. They're going to celebrate, basically, getting that park back up and looking good and doing all the work they did with moving the two monster piles of chips. I'd like to try and do that in other parks and get more people involved with adopting those parks. Part of community pride again, and believe me, these people over there are extremely proud of their park. Other than that, nothing more.
Mr. Creighton.
I just have one thing. Thanks for allowing Councilman Raymond and I to go back to One Voice. It was a great experience, we gained a lot of knowledge and made some great contacts back there. I did come back with some information from the Department of Justice that I'd like to work with, or not I, but I'd like the police chief to work with the council. We need a resolution stating that we will work with DOJ, something simple. The chief can work with the DOJ and the language, but you need a resolution in your hand to help get some funding, and we can be one of the first ones to do that. So I'd like to put that on the agenda and work the details out on that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. I'm going to also, for the record, the National Day of Prayer here, this one I had to miss because I was busy chasing Air Force airplanes that day. It was their go-home day, so it was very busy. One of the things that I wanted to mention, several people from McConnell, Master Sergeant Jordan Steele, Captain Beau Mohler, Major Durham, they call him Bull, go figure, and Tech Sergeant Wallace are just a few of the notable side of that. They had some bad experiences with breakfast, so I told them, "Go to Granny's." And so that's what we did. We all, about 11 or 12 of all the maintainers and myself and my crew, we all just invaded Granny's over there. No sooner came in and sat down, and there was a gentleman that had been having breakfast, and he came over to the waitress and threw a $20 bill down and said, "That is the tip. I want to contribute that tip for all these guys right here." And he thanked them for their service and all that. We had the breakfast, these guys raved about it. You know, this was towards the end of the trip here and everything, but they loved it up there. They loved going to Granny's, as we all have over the years and years that they've been there. And when it was all over and done with, and we were getting ready to leave, someone came up and came to the waitress and picked up the tab for the entire crew. And I got to tell you, that showed Atwater pride big time right there, that somebody came over there and picked that... You know, that wasn't a cheap bill, especially when Steele sat down to eat. He went and had a Western omelet, a stack of pancakes, and biscuits and gravy, and cleared it all. So, I mean, you know, this guy, like he hadn't eaten in a month or something. But any case, you know, it's a real sense of pride. And these guys all made it clear, along with their planners, that they love this city. And I want to particularly thank Granny's, Isabella's, Out of Bounds, and the Rancho del Rey Golf Course. You guys rocked. These guys loved you all. And so they are looking forward to their next trip back to our city, and I just want to tell you that, you know, we didn't do it, you know, you citizens within the city did that. You know, it really, you know, as mayor of this town, I couldn't have been more proud. And these guys made it clear several times that they want to come back here, and so we're looking forward to that. Their planners are already looking forward to coming back and being bigger and better. So just wanted to tell you that. The one thing, if I want to, will say, that I was extremely disappointed with was the involvement of the county. Not one supervisor, not one department head, nobody came out there for a meet and greet. They were here for two weeks. And I think that's kind of insulting. These guys came and dropped a lot of cash in this town, and our company alone is going to drop a check for about 30 grand for fuel flowage fees on the county. And nobody showed up. I thought that was, you know, if this would have been anybody else, maybe they would have. But, you know, these guys are the guys that have been into the desert and all that kind of stuff. These are warriors that are out there protecting this, and nobody from the county took the time to come out there. And I hope the next time they show up that that won't be the case. Anyhow, that's it, as the hour is late. I want to thank everybody for your comments tonight. Thank you all for watching at home. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.